Good evening. Call the order. We have a quorum. Could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Thank you, Weston, and welcome, everyone, to the July 25, 2023, meeting of the Ojai City Council. Weston, could you please say the pledge?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Everyone, please stand. Right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Weston. And before we have the approval of the agenda, I just want to welcome our new interim city manager, Mark Scott. Really grateful to have you here. It's been fantastic working with you so far.
A betful first week.
I bet. And welcome to our new Assistant City Manager, Carl Alameda. Thank you so much for being here, Carl. Really looking forward to working together as a team. So, thank you. Approval of the agenda. Motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second. And then, do I make the comment now? Okay. Just a comment about the agenda. If you're here to speak on Item D, what transpired in the last city council meeting with Jeffrey Starkweather, consider that your comments should go at that time, because I'll pull Item D. If it's a more general comment, then it's under public comments. But I will be pulling Item D, just so you know, so you don't need to speak on that item during general public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Is that clear?
And when I call your names, if you would like to wait, or if you need to wait until Item D, if you could just let me know, and then I'll file it. So, thank you. We have no presentations and no commission reports today, so we will move on to public communication. And just a reminder to everyone, these are items not on the agenda, and because they're not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them. We appreciate your viewpoint and participation, and we can... Oh, oops.
Yep. We need a vote, Madam Mayor.
I know. Right out of the gate, huh? Okay. All right, thanks. Motion to approve. Thank you, Rachel. And we have a second? A roll call, please, Weston?
Can I hear who made that second?
Suzie did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Roll call. For approval of the agenda, Mayor Stix.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Francina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, good. What will we do without our team? Thank you. So, we will move on to public communication. And just a reminder that normally, public comment is three minutes. At the end of the three minutes, you'll hear a gentle chime. And in the spirit of equity, please stop talking when you hear the chime. There's no giving away time to another speaker. And if you're in agreement with the previous person, please just say ditto. And just a little note, I've talked, well, several members of the public have reached out to me and who've really asked that we work together as a community to maintain decorum and civility at the meetings. On that note, please refrain from side comments and conversations during the meeting. We're all doing our best to listen, and it's tough with ambient noise, especially up here. When there's talk out in the audience, we really, it's really challenging to hear. So, let's all be gracious regardless of where we stand on a specific issue. And remember that we're all connected and part of the same community. So, let's focus on policy and be kind and welcoming to each other. So, let's go on to public comment. First, we have Bill Miley. And a reminder, if you want to speak on Item D, just let me know. Then we, oh, you know what? I'm sorry. We have two event organizations speaker cards. So, first, we have Callie O'Connor from the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, and then we have Robin Gerber.
All right. In the case of another Thomas Fire event, we need to have an evacuation plan. I'm here today to urge you to complete an evacuation survey so we can be better prepared. Hello, I am Callie O'Connor. I am the Executive Assistant at the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. The Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council has an ongoing project called the Wildfire Vulnerability and Evacuation Assessment. This project is funded by Cal Fire with a budget of $286,000. In 2019, 2022 to 2023, we asked for public feedback from the residents of the Ojai Valley and Ventura Watershed to survey public worries and concerns should we experience another catastrophe like the Thomas Fire. The number-one concern has been evacuation, which makes sense since the city is limited to three ingress and egress routes, and some of our neighborhoods have only one way in and one way out. During the Thomas Fire, there was congestion and people management issues. In Ojai, we have a history of multi-hazard concerns. Highway 33 is closed due to debris flow and flooding and is scheduled to reopen at the end of 2023. Cal Trans has proposed lane reductions in Oakview and across from Nordoff High School. All of these situations are motivations underlying the extensive vulnerability and evacuation assessment underway. A goal of the assessment is to understand community vulnerabilities and the capacity of our transportation system during a catastrophic wildfire scenario. Another goal is to develop recommendations to address how to reduce physical and social vulnerabilities, improve evacuation capacity, increase our capacity to respond at individual and community levels, and how to increase collaboration and coordination across involved parties. Our objective is not to develop an evacuation operational plan, but rather a mitigations and recommendations report that covers public education, roadway capacity improvements, roadside fuel treatments, at-risk individuals, criteria for shelter-in-place and temporary evacuation points, communications and messaging, and just as importantly, securing funding for future projects. As part of the evacuation assessment, we have an online public survey that is focused on the transit system and evacuation. It is important to get public input. As stated, one of our goals is to understand community vulnerabilities. Please fill out this public transit survey. It is anonymous and is an important component of this project. You can find this information and this survey at our website, www.ojaicwpp.org, and click on the orange button that says "Evacuation Survey." Please urge your neighbors and friends to take 10 to 15 minutes to complete it. The more responses we get, the more statistically significant the responses will be. This applies to those who live in the Ojai Valley and the Ventura River watershed, which includes Upper Ojai, Silver Mountain, Rose Valley, Casita Springs, and all the areas in between. I will pass this one pager with the QR code and link. Thank you for your time and participation.
Thank you so much, Callie. Much appreciated. And just a reminder to everyone, we have an evacuation drill at Nordoff tomorrow at 10:00 a.m.
Callie, can I make a clarification?
Sure.
You know, you mentioned the lane reduction at Nordoff and possibly by the time of the next fire in Oakview. I just want to make sure the public understands that if the, you know, the responders think it's better to open up all four lanes, they can all be opened up during emergencies. I think it's important for the public to understand that, if they don't already. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Callie. Next, we have Robin Gerber, then Bill Miley, and then Ruth Miller.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Robin Gerber. Welcome, Mr. City Manager. I'm here to talk about the new banners that have gone up for the Ojai Playwrights Festival. This is the 25th year of the festival. One of the founders is our current treasurer, Kim Maxwell, who many of you have taken classes with and know is a wonderful theater person and someone who really works with our young people. In the Ojai Playwrights Conference this year, she'll have a youth workshop where they perform that I guarantee will make you laugh and cry and open your eyes to new things. The playwrights who come to Ojai go on to, many of them have gone on to New York, to Broadway, to Off-Broadway. I myself am a playwright who is in the Ojai Playwrights Conference, and I might make it to Off-Broadway. Yes, I have another hat, Matt. I can see Matt's like, "What?" So, please come. This year, we're under new leadership. Jeremy Cohn is the new director, and he has secured for us the Thatcher Theater, which we have never had. It's over 400 seats. Everybody can come. It is pay what you can. We really want the community to be there this year. He wants to connect with our Ojai community, and we really haven't had that before. So, please come. These are young, diverse, brilliant playwrights from all over the country, and you'll be happy you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Much appreciated. Next, we have Bill Miley, then Ruth Miller, and then Betsy Van Light.
Good evening. My subject is justice for Commissioner Starkweather. I said on July...
Mr. Miley, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you want to wait? That's Item D on the consent calendar?
I don't think so. It has to do with the minutes, Mayor, not the subject.
Well, do you want to address that?
Well, I can't predict what you're going to say, but I did announce that...
I know.
We're going to discuss the issues with what transpired at the last meeting during Item D, the consent calendar, but I don't know what you have planned to say.
That would include the minutes also.
Yeah, if you're addressing the minute...
I have an item.
Yeah.
I presented an item to talk on Item D, which has to do with the correction of the minutes and not the issue of justice for Commissioner Starkweather.
I am pulling Item D.
It has nothing to do with justice. It has to do with the minutes.
We will be discussing the minutes on Item D.
Yeah, Bill Miley, could you chime in?
I'm not discussing the minutes.
Can I chime in for just a moment? Just one sec. You're not discussing?
I'm not presenting. I'm not talking about the minutes. I'm talking about justice for Starkweather.
He's talking about Starkweather.
Okay. Well, if you're talking about Commissioner Starkweather, that is Item D. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to?
The Item D, Item 1D is just the minutes. A broader discussion of Commissioner Starkweather is not Item 1D, so I would suggest let's hear from Mr. Miley now and then.
All right. Please continue. Thank you.
Okay. How about restarting this, please? Thank you. As I said on July 11 at the City Council, the ethical and fair option would have been to table this agenda item and set the item for a date when Commissioner Starkweather could be present and have a time to prepare and relative to the issues. The majority did not agree. Mayor Stix and Councilmember Whitman led the effort to remove Commissioner Starkweather. Justice did not occur. It was a trial via social media. The mayor detailed the charges. New Commissioner Starkweather was in Europe, prompted political support, failed to give him time or opportunity to respond in person, and deliberately failed to reset the agenda item two weeks later, when he could be present. The attempt to label him as a misogynist through social media was a cheap shot with, in outer context, three-word phrase, three-word phase, done in a personal way, to attack his character in a very biased manner, and no opportunity to defend himself. The city manager was neutral. What is missing all here is a failure to recognize real attacks on women with misogynist comments within city government functions by another person who was not brought to account. Where's the justice here? I support Commissioner Starkweather in wanting a proper hearing for these accusations. The present situation is unacceptable. In conclusion, a defendant has a constitutional right to take the witness stand and to testify in his or her defense. The right is now accepted to be inherent, part of the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment and the compulsory process clause of the Sixth Amendment. It was denied here. That's sad.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Next, we have Ruth Miller, then Betsy Van Light, then Barbara Bowman.
Good evening. Hi. Just a brief update on what our homeless task force is up to.
Please stick into the mic.
I'm too short. Ruth Miller.
Speakers don't have to ask that question.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say the very cool thing I got to do this morning, and that was to attend a meeting of the, are they not hearing me still? Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We were invited by Kay Wilson Bolton of Spirit of Ojai Homeless Shelter. I don't know if you know, but they were running out of funds and potentially going to need to shut their doors at the end of June, thus putting approximately 50 people back out on the street, and of them, 16 children. Kay and her team went out and rallied and came up with enough money for a month and a half. In the meantime, behind the scenes, the city of Ojai, the city of Fillmore, the Board of Supervisor, and Kay with Spirit of Ojai, along with Jennifer Harkey, Continuum of Care, and other players, decided to form an alliance, a partnership between those entities, city of Santa Paula, city of Fillmore, the county, and Spirit of Ojai, in order to not only just keep the doors open for now, but to fund them so that it becomes sustainable, so that those people no longer need to worry about being back on the street, so that Kay can go to sleep at night and know that those people are going to be fed and housed and taken care of. So, you know, one more group that's showing us how it can be done. We've been in touch with Dignity Moves, as I think most of you know. They provide these 10-by-10 rooms with a door that locks. Think about that. How would you feel if you were sleeping out here with a door that doesn't lock? Kids harass them on the street. They terrorize them from time to time. I've been talking to some of these people. These are grown men. These are not weak little children, small people. These are grown men that are afraid. They're afraid for their own safety, and they struggle to survive every single day. So, if we could provide them with a room with a locking door, they can feel safe. We can then bring in supportive services. This is something else I learned. You can't have a homeless shelter without supportive services so that they can, again, go on, and I'm running out of time. So, we've been in touch with Ken Kraft down in LA, and short, he said that once we're ready to, that he's very open to talking to us about supportive services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Next, we have Betsy Van Light, then Barbara Bowman, then Andy Gilman.
Good evening, Mayor, city councilors, city staff. I'm Betsy Van Light, and I'm a resident of Ojai. I'm here to make a suggestion that I think would be helpful to council discussion and decision-making in a general way. As way of background, I'm a retired university administrator and professor, and over the years, I've also worked extensively with community organizations in a variety of capacities. And I figure throughout my career, I probably have spent thousands of hours in meetings, maybe thousands and thousands, and I'm still here standing. And I've been involved in organizations that use a variety of systems of governance, and what I've come to see is no matter what the governance system you have, the importance and complexity of group discussion and group decision-making is incredible. It's the bedrock of how we decide things, and it's very complex. Now, I appreciate the logic of Rosenberg's Rules of Order that you use, but I have to say, trying to keep track when there's motions followed by substitute motions and amendments of various sorts gets really pretty overwhelming and pretty confusing. I know that's for me and for other people I've talked to. Here's the suggestion. Use visual aids. When you make a motion, type that motion and project it on the screen. Everyone knows what the motion says. If there's a substitute motion, same thing. If there's important amendments. I know, City Attorney, that you do an amazing job of trying to keep track of all of this, but that doesn't help the rest of us who are just relying on what we've heard or we think we've heard. So, if you use a visual system, which every educator knows makes a difference, you'll actually be able to track where you are in terms of what motion is before you, and it also will be really helpful for the public. That will help us have trust and transparency and feel like we know what's going on as well. So, I've got a whole lot of other suggestions for group discussion, but right now, the first one feels like using the screen for written motions. And then, we're all on the same page, and we know what we've done, and we know where we're going. So, I want to end by thanking you all for your service, because I know how hard you all work for our community, and I bow to you for that. I thank you for that.
Thank you, Betsy. Next, we have Barbara Bowman, then Andy Gilman, then William Wyrick. Okay, next, we have Andy Gilman, then William Wyrick, then Nora Harold.
Good evening, councilmembers. And I want to especially welcome Mark and Carl here. Nice to have you here. And I want to thank you all for your service as well. I have a general comment about the meeting structure, but prior to that, three very quick announcements. If I didn't say it, Andy Gilman, Director of the Agora Foundation. I live on Golden West, resident of Ojai. One, this Monday night, we continue with our Hitchcock Free series at the Ojai Brewery, and this time, it's Psycho, one of the best films of all time, at 8:00 p.m., and I hope you come. It's super fun, great community gathering that's free. So, this coming Monday at 8:00 p.m. Next, a week from today will be our first brown bag lunch in Libby Park. I know you know about that. A reminder email will go out tomorrow. That is 12 to 1. Near the fountain, I will be bringing chairs. And again, this is a place for informal colleagues to talk, asking questions like, "What's on your mind? How can we help each other in our work? How can we get to know each other better?" Finally, our next Ojai Chautauqua video interview will be with the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy that is about to unveil their five-year strategic plan. And it's really exciting. It's very interesting, so I think it'll be informative. So, look for that next month. Very fast. I'm going to speak quickly. My main point is the concern with how the council meetings are going and how long they take, and I respectfully offer you a few suggestions. Number one, after the public comments, set a time limit for discussion which is on the agenda. I've been a part of many boards as well, and we would do something like set 30 minutes for discussion on a particular item. The clerk would pay attention to that, and the discussion can be continued with a majority vote. What that does is it gets everybody a little bit closer on their conversation. They realize that we're going to come to a period that it's going to be a go or no-go to continue, and it focuses the conversation a little bit more. That's a suggestion. I think that there's too much time and passion being spent on things like procedure and eventually influence, and we miss things like paving and future priorities. So, don't let that happen tonight. It could easily. Next, being brief, clear, and distinct and on point in your conversations and giving each other a chance to finish. At Agora, we've conducted over 1,000 seminars, and something I offer to people when they ask, and you didn't ask, but I'm offering, if you use the word "and" more than four times, you've probably spoken too long. Just a suggestion. Finally, encourage each other to compromise. I would love to hear things like, "Here is how you and I can find a middle ground. Here's how we can work together on this." And lastly, this is for the public comments. I know sometimes we feel encouraged to speak on every item, and what I encourage, the same thing, is clarity, respectfulness, and that attacking just lowers our credibility. So, dazzle with reason and compassion instead. So, I would encourage that for everybody who comes in the public comments, as well as the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
A question, Andy. Andy, I'm sorry. Am I the only one that doesn't understand what you meant by "number one"? It sounded like you were suggesting that we do something for half an hour after public comment.
Yeah, yeah. I could tell you, sometimes it's called a time certain model, and what it is is, on the agenda, you would have an item like you do now, and it would say, "After public comments, there's 30 minutes set aside." So, you would be talking for 30 minutes, then the clerk would let you know, "We're at time," and a majority could decide we want to continue the conversation or not. So, what that does is, it gets the meeting down where you decide we're not making headway, or it gets people's comments more focused. So, it's a structure of a meeting that could work. I've seen it work before, and I've been a part of it. Does that make sense?
No, not yet. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
But is that legal?
The council can set a desired time limit for any given agenda item. The council majority can also modify that time set as desired. The one thing is, we couldn't use a time set to block public comments. A public comment couldn't count against that time limit.
I did not mean that. I meant your conversation. And I have to say that, for me, after three hours in any board meeting, I'm basically wanting to leave after three hours. We were here for five hours last time. So, I just, we got to get it shorter and more concise.
Thank you, Andy.
Yeah.
Next, we have William Wyrick, then Nora Harold, and then Robin Gerber.
Yes, William Wyrick. I just wanted to say a couple things about the effort that I have not had time to go and participate in, and that's the discussions on the Miners Oaks Park Initiative. You've seen advertisements for it. I have not had a chance to get there, and I wanted to make sure I shared with the council, staff, the community, that there was an agreement in principle with the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy for the little area along the 33 near Orowlar to be a parking area that, for support of the meadows, that could also easily be part of the programming for support of the Miners Oaks Park, proposed park, as well as collaborating with the city and the county on the proposal to do a bike path extension on the bridge area through the meadows. And I just hope it doesn't get forgotten in everything, that there is a willingness on the Conservancy to do that, and it would be a natural way to create kind of a community park support area in that land that is controlled by the Conservancy, that they're more than willing to work with the city in terms of doing a parking support area for both the meadows and this development. And I regret that I haven't had a chance to participate, but I would hope that that would be part of the institutional memory going forward with those proposed development ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Nora Harold, then Robin Gerber, then Chet Hilgers.
Hi. I'm Nora Harold, not a resident of the city. I live in Miners Oaks. So, I want to address what happened when I came up during the last meeting to speak. I wrote a thing, but, you know, it's nerve-wracking to come up here like this. And I felt bullied. I felt disrespected. I felt belittled. And I spent all day working on my statements, getting ready. You know, when I'm here, primarily not for me, because I can handle it. I'm here for all the community that sees that, that sees what happened, that sees me and other people being called crazy, that sees me being bullied by councilperson Rule, and that then feels afraid to come up and speak. So, I'm here for them. I also need to comment on the word "crazy." So, we've grown a lot. As we evolve, we learn, and we change our behavior. The word "crazy" used in the way it was used is ableist.
Is what?
Ableist. So, ableism is when we look at a disability and we say, "Well, that person is less than because of their disability." And "crazy" is about actual mental illness. So, to use it in the way it was used is actually a form of gaslighting. It's a way of saying, "Oh, you don't count. What you said is not important, and from my lay position, I'm going to diagnose you as mentally ill, and that's not okay." So, again, this is our evolution, right, as a species? I used to use the word "crazy" in the colloquial way that we all use it. I don't use it any longer. So, I'm going to end with that. I had a whole thing, but I feel like that's enough. I just want to say, though, I know you all personally. Suz, I've known you for a long time, and to hear you call me crazy when I stepped away hurt. It hurts.
May I please say that I did not call you crazy?
Suz, it is on video.
I did not direct my comment at you, and I want the public to know that I did not direct what I said at you.
You said these...
Excuse me. Just a reminder, this is, we're not having a conversation. Nora, do you want to finish your?
Yeah, I do. As I stepped away, you said, "These people are crazy." Immediately after I spoke, Suz, Leslie, you did this, like this heart chakra clearing thing, and then played with your mirror to redirect the energy or whatever you did, which felt completely inappropriate to me. Right? That's inappropriate. You work for the community. You are elected officials, and you could be removed just as easily as you were elected in your positions. And if you treat the community this way, you're not going to hold your seats.
Thank you, Nora. Next, we have Robin Gerber, then Chet Hilgers, and then Vicki Clark. Chet Hilgers, and then Vicki Clark, and then Jeffrey Starkweather.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor, council members, staff, and welcome, Mr. Scott. My name is Chet Hilgers, and I'm president still of the skate park, but I'm here tonight to talk about building a community pool behind the skate park. Today was especially hot to be working outside, as I do every day on three ranches in town. It was 104 where I was. People over the years have asked me about building a community pool adjacent to the skate park. When I was a kid growing up here, there were several great options for swimming. Those places are long gone, and even if you're able to build a swimming hole with rocks in the river, there's no great legal, dedicated, public place to go for a dip, cool off, and The Nordoff Pool will be controlled by the school district and have restricted hours. That's okay. The school district needs its own pool. I think it's a great time to float the idea of a community pool behind the skate park. A public pool could be a really great positive project that might help bring the city, the school district, and the community together. The city rec department has done a great job managing the skate park. The city could teach kids to swim, give priority to people who live valleywide, have movie nights, get a bite to eat from the neighboring farmer's markets. Just some ideas. A true, purpose-built community pool would benefit the greatest number of people, all ages in the valley. The goal would be to raise enough money to build the pool and donate the facility to the city, similar as was done with the skate park. I would only do it if we raised enough money for an endowment to pay for city staffing and expenses associated with operating a community pool. I don't want the pool to be a drain on the city. Let's start a dialogue, see where it goes. If you think this is something we should dive into as a community, then email me with your thoughts at ohishaparalpool@gmail.com. That's ohishaparalpool@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Chet. Next, we have Vicki Clark, then Jeffrey Starkweather, then Dee Reed. And then, we will take the rest of public comment after the first item. Thank you.
Mayor, may I just say, some people seem to be cold.
They're very cold.
Yeah, do you think we can do anything to regulate the temperature? Is that your job, do interim city manager?
Yeah. We're all in deep trouble if I have to find the thermostat.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Weston. Okay. Vicki Clark.
Hi, everyone. My name is Vicki Clark, and I live on Westminster Street in Ojai. I've debated, speaking before you for weeks, wondering what I might have to offer this body to move past the maddening and frustrating dysfunction that you've been demonstrating for the past seven months. You have had angry, shouting people come to you, and you've had compassionate, gentle people come to you, all asking you to set aside personal differences and do your jobs. So far, no change has been evident. I don't presume that what I say will change anything, but since I can't stop writing comments to you in my mind, I want to say my piece. Mayor, I implore you to stop asking for mutual respect and kindness and welcoming attitudes of your colleagues. You guys are nowhere near that. You are presiding over and contributing to one of the most contentious and hostile bodies I've witnessed in the more than 47 years that I've lived in this valley as an adult. If you could start with asking your colleagues to merely be civil to one another, maybe you could move forward from there. Mr. Whitman, I am particularly disappointed in your conduct, because when you were running for office, you came to my home and you sat on my porch with me, and we talked about how this is likely going to be a very challenging council. And you assured me that you could work productively with whomever your elected colleagues would be. I told you I would vote for you, and afterward, I thought, here's a calm guy who knows these systems and can operate effectively within them. Sadly, you have revealed yourself to be something very different than that. I now see you as an arrogant, disingenuous, petty bully, and I'm sorry that I voted for you. I want you to know that while I do live in the district, you represent, you do not represent me. You, as a council, have an opportunity for a fresh start of sorts with the new interim city manager in place. You can act as if you're professional adults. I would suggest that you, as a body, consider following a few simple principles moving forward. Tell the truth, don't interrupt, don't whine, and don't demean your fellow council members. If those guidelines are too specific to implement, perhaps y'all can just adapt Willie Nelson's family motto. It's brief and in language that Mr. Whitman will likely recognize. Their motto is, don't be an asshole. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. And just a reminder to the audience, if you could refrain from clapping and just be silent. Next, we have Jeffrey Starkweather, then Dee Reed, and then we'll move on to the agenda.
Just a second, I'm going to pass something out here. And if possible, I'd be glad to get maybe 30 seconds more than three minutes if I can respond to four hours of the clock on me. But you can say no, I'll just continue the next one.
I think we should keep it three minutes.
I would be okay with it.
Mr.?
I'm okay if you need another minute, since you've been gone, and a lot has happened. Okay. Thank you.
Four minutes, Weston? Is that okay?
This is, is this one separate?
I've got a couple more.
Okay.
Not give everybody one.
Are these all the same?
They're all the same, they're eighty-two.
I have a little stack here.
No, they're not all the same. There's a statement, and there's two attachments.
Okay, I have two of this, maybe that one's for you.
And mayor and council, in compliance with the Brown Act, this will be available for public review from the clerk's office after the meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
I have, it's right there. Thank you, citizen. I was deeply distressed and saddened to learn that despite being promised that the effort to remove me from the planning commission would be not voted on upon while I was away on a long, planned, 25-day, 17-city vacation tour of Ireland, Scotland, and England. Obviously, it was even more distressing to learn that the effort to remove me took on a false character assassination of me as a supposed misogynist. Even more disturbing was that I was falsely attacked without being given opportunity to defend myself in person. As I've demonstrated in the private emails here, I just provided you, from August of last year, the reference to, quote, "weak female opponents" was an analysis of their electability and related to their lack of experience and time in Ojai, and not to there being women. As I explained to Mark Whitman, Councilman Whitman's brother, this was only a private email to five members of a nonprofit board, and was only spread inappropriately beyond that group by Councilman Whitman and his wife, Heidi, not by me. Also, the statement of the mayor that this initial private assessment only came to light 10 days before the July city council meeting is false. Rachel Lang and Betsy Sticks were aware of this statement 11 months ago. This is a classic political speech and private, and to retaliate against me now for that speech that was released by the very council member who wants to remove me is clearly a violation of my free speech rights under the First Amendment and the Brown Act. I can be removed for any reason and no reason, but I can't be removed for an unconstitutional reason. None of the accusations were factually correct in terms of my service on the planning commission. I've given you a copy of the February 27th correspondence to the city manager, when he asked me to stop sending emails about matters concerning the city council. As I stated, excuse me, as he stated, that is exactly what I did, stop sending emails some five months ago. Moreover, I have never had a single private meeting with James Vega. I've never been in his office, I've never had a telephone call. How could I be interfering with his work? Again, there was no emergency to extinguish, to call for this attempt to remove me when I'm not here. Finally, as to supposed conflicts amidst my role as president of the Ojai Valley Democratic Club and my role as a planning commissioner, that is another false accusation. I've never communicated to the city council or the planning commission as a representative of the Democratic Club and matters concerning the planning commission. The club generally does not weigh in on issues before the city council. Unlike simply Ojai and its supporters, I have spoken to the city council only once in the last year as a representative of the city of the club, and that was to support Mayor Franciscan, Francina, excuse me, and to support the city council signing the cease and desist agreement and to record their meetings. All of the times I have spoken or been to the city council have been as a private resident, clearly not taking, speaking for the Democratic Club or planning commission. I'm practically done if I can finish. Also, I have never spoken before the city council or the public about matters that were about to come before the planning commission, unlike Mayor Sticks, who has regularly communicated to her supporters to come and back her positions on legislative matters before public hearings, public comments, and staff reports have been heard. Finally, what this is really about was trying to silence a strong and consistent advocate for much-needed, new, low-impact infill housing. But this attempted removal from the planning commission will not slow down my public advocacy on issue. It will only enhance it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Next, we have Dee Reed, and then we'll move on to the agenda.
I have known Jeffrey Starkweather for 45 years and been happily married to him for 38. I'm proud of his advocacy for affordable housing and collaborative policymaking. I don't usually comment publicly on his work, but this time, a line was crossed. Egregious, unfounded allegations about misogyny generated by the mayor and Councilman Andy Whitman's family, all ginned up to mobilize their base and provide an excuse to remove Jeffrey from the planning commission. You have to know that I'm a feminist. I would not put up with a misogynist for 10 minutes, let alone 38 years. So, you got your story wrong, but you already know that. I would simply like to set the record straight before our community devolves into a toxic mosh pit that will continue to churn on social media until what we cherish about Ojai is gone. You will hear statements tonight explaining why Jeffrey is not a misogynist, of course, and should not be removed from the planning commission. It would have been nice if you listened to what Planning Commission Chair Steve Quilisi said about Jeff's skillful role on the harmonious planning commission, and that he certainly does not think he should be removed or resign. The mayor has insisted that she had to put this on the agenda while we were out of the country, and that she had to vote to remove him immediately because so many people called, commented, and showed up to show their concern that a misogynist was run amok on the planning commission, exclamation point. She forgot to mention that the publication of her agenda item itself is what mobilized the women in the first place. They believe the spin about the email messages somehow proving he is a misogynist. And as Jeffrey said, those email messages were circulated by the Whitmans, not Jeffrey Starkweather. The idea that he flooded the city manager also was greatly exaggerated, and James Vega, bless his heart, and Jeffrey settled that matter five months ago. So, what we're left with is an understanding that Andy Whitman wishes to make his planning commission appointment right now, doggone it, rather than after Jeffrey's term ends, as is usually the protocol. To do that, he'd have to break that protocol of many years, so they needed another excuse to act more quickly. I wonder if there's anything in the protocol to address what to do when a sitting council member exploits another sitting council member as an inadvertent pawn in a scheme to oust a sitting planning commissioner with unfounded allegations, reckless disregard for the truth. Sounds like bad behavior to me, but I don't know if it's in the protocol, so you might get away with it. Jeffrey and Councilmember Rachel Lang thankfully have talked in person, face to face, which is what people used to do when they had questions to sort it out. I would like to read the remainder of my remarks. It will take about 30 seconds. It would have been nice if the mayor or Andy Whitman could have talked with Jeffrey rather than misuse and manipulate women concerned about misogyny. Did anybody stop to think that it might have been painful for some of those women to come up here and talk against Jeffrey at your last meeting? Well, I guess the ends justify the means, don't they? I'm glad that Jeffrey and Rachel have talked in person, and it was a good talk. She understands he is not a misogynist, of course, and that he is a good planning commission member. Since you actually passed a substitute motion to let Jeffrey step down, he should be allowed to choose to keep his seat on the planning commission, as his chairman of the planning commission wishes. There's no evidence for removing, and Lord knows, there's plenty of work to do. It's past time for the rest of us to start talking to each other in person again. I just hope it's not too late.
Thank you, Dee. All right, we will-
I want to just clarify.
Just a reminder to bring, ask the chair to speak.
We didn't discuss comments. Thank you.
Can I? So, I didn't-
Well, we can clarify, as Suz did. We can ask questions. City manager?
No longer than a minute.
Confirm? Yep.
I won't use, I won't use even a minute. I never raised-
Just a reminder to the audience, if you could refrain from those kind of comments, they're disrespectful, and we're trying to listen up here.
I never raised one word about misogyny, and neither did my wife. So, if people read the email and they had interpreted it as misogyny, that wasn't because of what we said. All of my comments about Jeffrey's service was that it was inappropriate to have a political activist serving on one of our commissions. And I'll leave my comments the way they were.
Okay. Counsel, we're really moving on to the consent calendar, so can we wait and handle that? Okay, so, we'll move on to the consent calendar, or is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I want to pull item six, which is-
D.
I mean, D. And then go on to number 6D.
Okay.
Page 1-29.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we will go ahead and hear the public comments from that?
Well, first, we should let people know what it is, okay? So, the item I pulled-
Madam Mayor, if I could jump in briefly, it might be wise to approve the rest of the consent calendar, first, A through C, and E through G, unless there's any public comments on that, which there may not be.
No. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we will move on and look at item D, and we'll hear from the public. First, we have Bill Miley, then-
I still want to read it.
Okay.
So, the item that we're pooling is stated as request from Mayor Sticks to remove Planning Commissioner Jeffrey Starkweather from planning commission, and the recommendation is that city council consider Mayor Sticks' request to remove Planning Commissioner Jeffrey Starkweather from the planning commission. And since this is part of the consent calendar and not on the agenda, since it was on the agenda previously, I had to pull it from the consent calendar. Just want to make sure that anyone knew, understands that. And I also want to make just some corrections before I make any statement.
Well, we need, let's take public comment first.
I think, I think, you know, I might forget, can I?
We need to take public comment first.
Well, no, these are just simple technical corrections, as far as I know.
Mr. City Attorney?
We do them, we do them at the beginning. We don't, we always have, once it's pooled, we're allowed to discuss. We don't have to go right- We don't have to go right into public comment.
Let's hear from our city attorney.
Typically, we have allowed for council comments, and then public comment, and then action. I would suggest that if the comments from Mayor Pro Tem are more, are controversial, then it may be wise to wait for public comment. If they're truly minor technical corrections, then you might say them now.
Yeah. It just says under public comment, it lists all, it lists the people, and it said, and then it says that they stated their opinions in favor of the removal of the commissioners. And it includes, I don't know, I didn't look at what everyone said, but I don't think Barry Robbie, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right, or Didi Dorfskent were in favor of the removal of the commissioner. And I think that if that's not the case, they wouldn't want to see their name characterized, you know, on that. We should just make sure that that's accurate. And I can check it out, but I'm, there could be others in that same list. That's all I have right now.
All right, thank you. All right, first, we have Bill Miley, then Lenny Clafe, and then Jeffrey Starkweather.
Good evening, Bill Miley. The draft statement in the minutes showing the council motion to remove Planning Commissioner Jeffrey Starkweather from the Planning Commission is incorrect. That's not what councilmember Whitman said, as evidenced in the video play of the council meeting and in the memory and notes of many people present, and as shown in today's Ojai Valley News. He said, "But let him step down," and it received a three to two vote. So this is not what is in the drafted minutes. The drafted minutes say, quote, "Remove Planning Commissioner Jeffrey Starkweather from the Planning Commission," end quotes. Now, to give a benefit of the doubt on how this happened, it looks like a simple line error. The mayor's motion, which came before and did not get a vote, is exactly what this says. So it's likely a clerical error. It must be corrected, for that's not what was voted on. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Lenny Clafe, then Jeffrey Starkweather, then Robin Gerber.
Leonard Clafe, I live in the city of Ojai. I too agree with Mr. Miley that the minutes are incorrect when they, when they claim that the vote was to remove Mr. Starkweather from the Planning Commission. Language is important. We recognize certain sounds as being a certain word, and we assign a common meaning to each word. Imagine if some people hearing the word "up" thought of the sky or the ceiling, while others thought of the floor or the ground, or others thought to the right or the left or the right or the left. We would not communicate without a common understanding of what certain sounds mean. Mayor Styx's motion was to remove Mr. Starkweather. The meaning of the word "remove" in that context is pretty darn clear. But there was no vote on Mayor Styx's motion. Councilmember Whitman made a substitute motion. A substitute motion is in lieu of or instead of the original motion. The substitute motion was to allow Mr. Starkweather to step down. Allowing someone to stop, step down is not the same as removing someone. If the words had the same meaning, why was there a need for the substitute motion? In addition, putting the ball in Mr. Starkweather's court, allowing him to resign or step down, is not unheard of. Frequently, people are given the opportunity to resign before being fired or removed. So there's a logic. I don't know whether it was intended, but there certainly was a logic to Mr. Whitman's substitute motion. Thus, Mr. Starkweather is currently a member of the Planning Commission and will remain so unless and until he steps down or there is a vote to remove him by the council. Please amend the minutes of the last meeting to reflect what really happened. Truth is truth.
Thank you, Lenny. Next, we have Jeffrey Starkweather, then Robin Gerber, then William Wyrick.
Thank you. Rachel and I did have a long meeting, at which she indicated to me was her understanding that what she was voting for was to let me step down. Now, it doesn't really matter, actually, what anyone's intentions are when the words themselves speak as a motion. And the city attorney can't go and interview you all and decide what the minutes, what it meant. That seemed improper. That would be a violation of the Brown Act. So when you have a substitute motion, that essentially wipes out the original motion. And you can't have a substitute motion that is the same as the motion it's substituting. That would be the violation of rules. Secondly, when you listen to Mr. Whitman's language, and he is an attorney, so he should be able to speak properly and say what he's trying to do, he says, "My, my substitute motion is that we thank Mr. Stark for his service, but let him step down." "Let" means allow, dictionary definition of the word. Then he goes on about, we want to talk about dissatisfaction, and then he ends it by saying, "But one thing that is always present is that the city council can remove a commissioner if they think that's in the best interest." And then summarizing his whole motion, he says, "So that's my motion." The fact that they can is not a motion to remove. And secondly, you can't have contradictory actions in the same motion, let him step down and removing him. That would make the motion invalid. So, finally, I think that it's important, particularly in a case like this, where the person who was being accused and removed wasn't even there to defend themselves, that the motion ought to be carried on about as to what it actually says, to let him make a choice. And of course, you know exactly what my choice will be. And if you do want to remove me, go ahead and give me a chance to defend myself in an actual hearing, because that's what should be required of anybody removing from a position. Because this is a property right. Any position that you get appointed to is a property right. So depriving me of due process, to me, is a violation. As well as what I've said earlier, I think this whole thing is a violation of my First Amendment rights and a violation of the Brown Act. And it's not going to end here if you remove me, because I plan to take it to the DA, and I don't know where else, because I think this is improper, and I will fight. And I'm not fighting for myself, I'm fighting for other people, because this will have a chilling effect on the free speech of every commissioner, every citizen in this community, that you guys will retaliate them if they speak against you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Question of the city attorney related to this, if I may. City Attorney, to the best of my knowledge, we've always wait, this is my 10th year on the council, and we have always waited till a commissioner completes their term before removing them unless they have multiple absences. I don't remember any other time, I could be wrong, but I don't remember any other time that a commissioner was removed before their term expired. Do you know?
In my eight years with the city, I can't recall a time when a commissioner was removed before their term, except for absenteeism.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we have Robin Gerber, then William Wyrick, and then Carol Smith.
Having fun yet, Mr. Scott? Robin Gerber, I live here in the city. Mayor, you have made some very eloquent, I would say, comments about the importance of the rule of law. That really is what we're talking about here. If you don't operate, as we lawyers have been taught, within the rule of law, which has a pretty expansive meaning, it even expands to Rosenberg's rules, which seems pretty minor. It's not just the Constitution of the State of California, or the Constitution of the United States, it's even Rosenberg's rules, which are in our municipal code and which you have taken an oath to abide by. And if you don't, it's kind of like if I drove home right now and all the stop signs and traffic lights and lines in the road were removed. We have these rules for a reason. You will operate better and really start to trust each other more if you operate under the rules, and I think this is a perfect example of that. Betsy, you put this unilaterally on the agenda, throwing a wrench, as you can see, into the works, and then, to make it even worse, there was a ham-handed, sorry, but it was, substitute motion exhibiting a misunderstanding of Rosenberg's rules, which, for God's sake, Mr. Scott, would you please give this council some guidance on that and training? And here we are, with a vote that was taken that not everyone fully understood, when the rules are there for finality, you have anything but. So fix it, fix it in the right way. You want to go back and remove Jeffrey? Fine, although, in fact, in my experience, it's never been done. I was on the Arts Commission when there was an attempt by people I won't name to remove an Arts Commissioner, Christine Steiner. People were very upset about that. Mayor, you were upset about it, too. And I was, too. It had never been done. It was a public, trying to do a public hanging. And it was very, very nasty. And thankfully, the two members of council who put it on the agenda, one of them stepped back. And guess what happened? There was actually a discussion. Everyone sat down and talked to each other. And by the way, Commissioner Steiner was accused of taking, I'm sorry, yes, Commissioner Steiner was accused of taking up too much staff time. She was a brand-new commissioner, and yes, she had talked to James. And yet, she was not removed. It would have been wrong, and this is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Next, we have William Wyrick, then Carol Smith, and then Larry Steingold.
I believe my card says number two.
Oh, okay, never mind. Thanks, Bill. Carol Smith, and then Larry Steingold.
Good evening, council, staff, mayor. My name is Carol Smith. I live at 23 Tarmino Lane in the city of Ojai. I had the privilege to be on the council and serve as mayor for 12 years. And yes, we did remove a sitting commissioner for absenteeism. But more than that, we also disbanded two commissions. We disbanded the redevelopment commission, because its work had pretty much been done, and we disbanded the youth commission. And again, it was, commissions are expensive. They take up a lot of staff time, and if they have served their purpose, they could go away. The youth commission was an interesting one. I think it was Steve Olson who started it, and I think they did a pretty good job, but once again, it had served its purpose. The way that Mr. Starkweather was removed is what I really have exception with. The fact that he wasn't in town, the fact that he didn't have a chance to present his point of view, the fact that there was nasty PR about it, it just left a bad taste in my mouth. If there's any way, Ms. Lang, that you could recuse your, not recuse, you can, what's the word? It is the reconsider your motion and bring that up at a future meeting, that would be fine. But normally, why did it even require going to a meeting? If you wanted really to remove him, it seems to me the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and the commissioner of the planning are the proper people to discuss what the issues are. When we removed the person from the planning commission, when we disbanded those two other commissions, it wasn't, it wasn't done in a public setting like this. It was done very, very respectfully and carefully. So I'm not sure if somewhere in the rulebook, it had to be done the way it was. So I take exception to that. And Councilwoman Lang, if you could reconsider it and get it on, or just remove the agenda and handle it another way, I think that would be good for the city. It has created more harm than good, and I know you did not mean that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. And just to confirm, Mr. City Attorney, we do need three votes in order to do that, correct?
To do what?
To remove a council, I mean, a commissioner.
Yes, removing a commissioner takes three votes on the council. Often, it's, I believe in the past, handled by asking for resignation. Confident three votes exist, the person resigns, nothing is done on an agenda, but that only works if the person is willing to resign, and that can't be done with any Brown Act violations, of course. The council member making the ask has to be confident, cannot have asked anybody about that. Absent all of that, then it's three votes in public.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Larry Steingold.
Good evening, citizen and taxpayer resident. Congratulations, Mr. Scott and Mr. Almeida, welcome to the land of the lost. Thankfully, we have video and audio of the last meeting, so it can't be deleted, so we don't want to chill any investigations. But I'm more distressed, not that the fact that you want to get rid of Jeffrey. Jeffrey and I have lots of disagreements, and I don't, one way or the other, it doesn't really matter, but he wasn't here. It doesn't take a lot of courage to tell somebody to get out of my house in their face. Okay? If you don't like him, fine, you got votes, you can vote him, but you don't have to rip him another one when he's not here. Okay? Put it back on the agenda, and let's hear all the same people who were here ripping him another one so he can defend himself and defend everybody else, because this is absurd. Okay? The fact that he wasn't here is very disrespectful of him, of us, of everybody. How would you like to be hung? You're a defense attorney. Would you defend your defendant when he wasn't around? What would you say to the court? Okay? I mean, this is absurd. It really is not fair. It's very disrespectful, and we all need to be heard and be defended. Okay? I'm not here to defend Jeffrey. He can defend himself. But he should have a right to be here when you're tossing him off the boat. Okay? You don't have to like him, doesn't matter, because you have the right to. That's part of being a city councillor. You have a job to do. And if you think he's standing in the way of whatever you're trying to accomplish, then get rid of him. Okay? But not the way you did it. I mean, do you feel proud? I'm sure it was very political and very correct, but so what? You all have rights. We all have rights. We have laws. Use them, but not against this. This is blatantly unfair, and we all live here, and we're going to see each other tomorrow at coffee, maybe. Maybe not. All right? But please, put it back on the agenda and hear everybody all over again so we can move on, because this town's got bigger issues than to tie this thing up, because for the past seven months, we've had the Becker Project tying everything up, putting everything back for public speaking, then a rent stabilization law that we need that's got to be rewritten so it actually functions. We have public roads we have to figure out. We've got valet parking. I have no idea what's going to happen there. All right? And then this, we're not doing anything. Maybe that's the reason we're doing okay. Don't get anything done. Maybe it works that way. Anyway, please put it back on the agenda so we can hear everything he wants to say, to defend all the things that were said against him. Thank you. And for the next person.
Thank you, Larry. And just a question, we have six more public comments, are any of those public comments on item D? Anyone?
Barbara?
Is it Barbara?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. Do you want to go, go ahead, Barbara? I'm sorry. I thought you were coming. Apologize.
Hi, Barbara Bowman. I'm a property owner in the city of Ojai and a retailer here. I am going to read you something, rather than just, by the way, welcome. God, not the way I wanted to meet you. Anyway, I'm going to read this, and this is women who have signed on a letter for Jeffrey, because Jeff- He's knowledgeable and professional, and we're grateful for his leadership in the Ohio Valley Democratic Club." And which in which, he seeks endorsements, and that's what he's been doing. Jeffrey is a strong advocate for affordable housing and for inviting all stakeholders to collaborate in addressing the most serious problem facing our community, which is exactly why they want him off the planning commission, because he will get something done on housing, and they don't want anything done. Now, Mayor Betsy Sticks and Councilman Andrew Whitman are trying to retaliate against Jeffrey for his advocacy on housing. And they're using an unfounded smear to remove him from the planning commission. It is outrageous that they voted on it while you heard, when he was out of town, and which everybody, there's pretty much an agreement on that. We are appalled that Mayor Sticks and Councilman Whitman have deliberately misconstrued a brief private note that Jeffrey dashed off in an email to a small group of individuals. The message was about someone being electable. It was not about a woman being weak as a person. It was being weak as a candidate, because they were new to the town, hadn't lived here long, and hadn't been on any committees. He was never directing it personally at two people. He has backed women since he's been in North Carolina. He backed women in offices, and he backed two women this last time. He's the least misogynistic man I've ever met. He's a total feminist, as is his wife. Women, a year later, suddenly, women who had never met Jeffrey were mobilized, rushing to the city council meeting to urge them to remove this incredible misogynist from the planning commission. Councilmembers Rachel Lang, Susa Francina, and Leslie Rule made it clear that Jeffrey is not a misogynist. And I congratulate you guys on coming out and standing behind a guy who isn't. Jeffrey has befriended, encouraged, and monitored and campaigned for many women. Jeffrey has since encouraged those who did not receive a club endorsement to stay active in politics and civic activities. The council's motion to let him step down from the planning commission was passed and recorded, but now that recording is being ignored, and the motion is being falsely rewritten by the city to write in its draft minutes that the motion was to remove Jeffrey from the planning commission. We urge the council to acknowledge that they have already passed a motion to let him step down. Jeffrey has chosen not to step down. The council should and must accept that. Ooh, I've never spoken so long. Sorry. It's because I did, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any comments online?
Yes, we currently have one raised hand. Barry Rabe. Barry Rabe, I'm going to bring you in now. You have the floor.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to confirm Susa Francina is correct. I spoke against the removal of Jeffrey Starkweather. That was because it was not city business, it was personal revenge. It's part of a pattern of retaliation, and it's also a diversionary tactic. Betsy Sticks doesn't want to talk about her own email released under a Freedom of Information Act request. That included a message from Tom Francis documenting the fact that Betsy Sticks betrayed the Ohio City Council and the city of Ohio in her prior term. She worked with Simply Ohio to defeat the will of a supermajority of the Ohio City Council. She worked to thwart the will of the elected majority in favor of her own agenda and that of her friends, violated the confidence of the other members of the council, providing privileged emails to Leslie Hess, Tom Francis, and Sabrina Venskus. We still don't know the full extent of what Betsy Sticks provided Leslie Hess, Tom Francis, and Sabrina Venskus. The city attorney redacted many emails. What Betsy Sticks shared freely with people preparing a lawsuit against the city is too sensitive to be shared with the public. Simply Ohio and Sabrina Venskus filed a lawsuit against the city on December 1, 2022. Betsy Sticks asked Sabrina Venskus who she should hire to represent the city. Leslie Rule disclosed this fact, later confirmed by Sabrina Venskus, to the public. Both Betsy Sticks and Sabrina Venskus claimed to see nothing wrong with this. Under our adversarial legal system, Betsy Sticks didn't see the person suing the city as an adversary. So the retaliation begins. Betsy Sticks and Andy Whitman moved to have the city sue Leslie Rule. The motion didn't pass. Sabrina Venskus then brought a suit against Leslie Rule and her attorney, John Drucker. District Attorney's Office determined the Ohio City Council and Leslie Rule both violated the Brown Act. Leslie Rule committed unconditionally not to violate the Brown Act again. Betsy Sticks and Andy Whitman have expressed a desire to withdraw their unconditional commitment. The lawsuit against Leslie Rule continues. Asked what possible public good it could serve, Sabrina Venskus responded, "No comment." If it were about anything other than the sort of personal revenge we see in the attack on Jeffrey Starkweather, the plaintiff should be suing Betsy Sticks and Andy Whitman, not the people committed to abide by the Brown Act. And I'd like to take just the last couple of seconds to say thank you very much to Leslie Rule, Susa Francina, and Rachel Lang for serving the city council with integrity.
Thank you, Barry. And just a couple corrections. I forwarded two emails that I should not have, and I apologize for that. One was about trees, and one was about tenant protection. And then I did get three recommendations for law firms, Remi Moose Manley in Sacramento, Whitwer Parkin in Santa Cruz, and Shute Mahaly. Shute Mahaly is rated one of the best law firms, according to U.S. News and World Report in California, and it was a 5-0 unanimous vote to hire that firm. It's a great firm, so. Okay, we will, is that it?
Excuse me, can I make a quick point? I would like to make a quick point. The question has never been the law firms. The question has always been where you got the recommendations from. So I just, I think that that's very important to clarify. I understand that you got a number of recommendations. I understand that the law firm that we hired is an excellent law firm. That is not the question. So I just, I think we need to be very clear about what the real question is, and I just need that there be clarity on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rule. Any other comments?
Yes, one more raised hand. Jerry S.
I want to wait for that.
Okay.
Jerry, you have the floor.
Yes, I asked a couple of things. One thing is that there seems to be a real misunderstanding about those attorney referrals. They were not referred for the case that Attorney Venskus is representing against the city. Those were referrals for consultations for a possible lawsuit, is my understanding, coming from the Becker Group. So there's absolutely no conflict of interest there that I can see. And, you know, that misunderstanding, whether it was accidental or intentional, became the basis for a vicious six-month smear campaign. And it was never retracted by the person who started it. So I think that's terribly wrong. The other thing is that I saw that article about Women for Jeffrey Starkweather, and I note that there are two city council members' names on that. And that, to me, would represent a clear conflict of interest. And I'm going to suggest that they should probably recuse themselves from all matters Starkweather from here on. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Yep, Mr. City Manager, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I was going to suggest, back on the topic. And assuming that everybody from the public's made their comments about the minutes, I did want to offer a couple of comments about the minutes. I want to acknowledge that the minutes don't state all of the comments that went into the motion. Minutes don't always cover everything that gets said. And the one reason, you know, they call them minutes and not hours. One of the reasons that you don't have to state everything is that the tape does exist, and one of the speakers said that. If you ever got into a litigation situation, you could very easily get a transcript of the whole thing. So just in general, I want people to understand that minutes aren't always entirely complete in every word that they put in it. Now, having said that, I understand that in this circumstance, that becomes germane. And I certainly think that one of the things that the council could choose to do at this point is to clarify the minutes and include the whole language from the motion that's made. I still think it begs an important issue, and I want to talk about that briefly. And it may be that I made a mistake. I think it's time for people to accept that. Sometimes we make mistakes. And it only took me one week to get to that point. But maybe, yeah, thank you. But maybe, maybe we could have done the minutes differently. I don't know. But I will tell you, in all sincerity, that as I listened to that meeting from my bed in Fresno, and listening to it on ear things, whatever they're called, so that my wife could sleep, a little editorial about how late your meetings go. But as I, as I listened to that, I believed that I heard a motion that did, in fact, offer an either-or, but that removal was the intent of the motion. I believed that. When I came to work, the staff, and even before I came to work, the staff that I talked to believed that as well. We might have been wrong. Maybe that wasn't the intent of the council who voted for it. I think that's up for you to clarify, but that's why the minutes are written the way that they're written. It was, it certainly wasn't anybody's attempt to change the truth. It was simply a statement of what we believed had happened. In fact, so much so, that when I came to work and found out that no one had notified Mr. Starkweather, and I thank you, sir, for having been polite with me when I called you, I told him he'd been removed. I mean, it was more than just the minutes. I actually wrote him a letter that's in the public record saying that the council had taken action and voted to remove him. We sent it to the planning commission. I mean, it was certainly our thought that that's what had happened. I recognize that people can argue the other side of that. I hear those, the logic in some, in all of that, and perhaps, perhaps I was wrong. It's really something that the council would know, not me. I think at this point, to get to the point, I think at this point, the council's got two obvious choices, and maybe you were smart enough to have other choices. But one of them would be to take a vote on the minutes, to decide what you want to put into the minutes, and to say whether or not those minutes are going to reflect an intent that replacement discharge was part of the motion. That would be one appropriate approach the council could take. The other would be to do what several people have asked for, and that's to decide, to agendize it, to do another process, to decide, to make a motion again, and to clarify it. I think both of those are valid approaches. Some will be more appreciated by some and some by others, but I think those are both valid approaches. And I think really, at this point, that's what your task is as you look at this set of minutes, is to do one or the other.
Thank you, Mark. All right, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to motion that we replace the current minutes with the actual statement that was, that was said, which we have heard. But it is, my substitute motion is that we thank Jeffrey Starkweather for his service, but let him step down, and that we work with the commission, as we work with the commission on these rules. Because there's been a lot of dissatisfaction, from what I can see, and there's a lot of confusion, but one thing, you know, we always, the president and the city council can decide to remove a commissioner, et cetera, et cetera. My motion is that we correct the record. This is a record. It's not an interpretation of what was said. And I think that it speaks very clearly to the need of having recordings of what is said. We cannot, in my opinion, and I realize that I'm editorializing, we cannot have a record, an official record, that is inaccurate. I don't see how we move. If we then want to reagendize, that is possible. But my motion is, is that we correct the minutes to accurately reflect what the motion was.
Is there a second?
I'll second for purpose of discussion, and I would ask, perhaps Councilwoman Rachel Lang could clarify what her understanding of the motion was.
We will go Ron Robin. Rachel, you ready?
Yes, yeah. So my understanding of the motion was that he would be removed, but that it would be done in a way that allowed some dialogue. So that if, that the option to step down would be the first, the first choice. And, and my hope in, I mean, my understanding of the motion and my hope in voting that way was that we could try to mitigate some of the, I mean, some of the, quite honestly, some of the pain of the, what was said and the process. So my, but my understanding in voting that way was that, that there was a strong enough case for removal. And if I could offer one thing, too, I think this is very important, that we, and I've been saying this from the beginning, first of all, I apologize for having the discussion without Mr. Starkweather here. I know I was one of the people who voted for it, and I had very clear reasons why I voted for it. But I think if we are going to reagendize this, and if this motion does pass, then I think it's important that we have that discussion along with a discussion about how we handle commissioners in general, how we appoint them, how we remove them, because this, to me, could have all been, this could have been avoided if we had a more clear procedure for this.
Councilmember White?
Yeah. So I did a lot of reading in the last couple of days, and what's very clear is that minutes are not intended to be a quotation. They're intended to be a recording of the event that occurred. And, you know, there's a principle in the law that if there's any ambiguity, the intent is what governs. And, you know, my intent, and I think the intent of the people who voted in favor of my motion, was that ultimately Jeffrey was going to be removed. He did have the option to step down, but if, what we didn't say anywhere in that motion is that we would leave open the option of Mr. Starkweather to stay on if that was his choice. And that was clearly not our intent. So my thought would be that if we do any type of clarification of the minutes, we clarify what our intent was, and that was that if Mr. Starkweather did not step down, that we would, he would be removed. So I guess that would be my substitute motion.
Can you repeat that motion, Andy?
I have a question. City attorney.
Okay. The motion, the substitute motion, is that if we are going to change the language of the minutes, that we include within our statement that there was no intent to leave Mr. Starkweather the option to stay on the commission if that was his choice, that the intent was that if he didn't step down, he was going to be removed.
I will second that motion.
A question of the city attorney. Could you read the exact wording of Councilmember Whitman that was made that night, you know, if you have it? Because I think that, and that's, so many people miss, have, there's been so much debate as to the intent and the actual wording. I I, um...
I can read it if you'd like, with a caveat.
Okay.
The caveat is that this is my transcription from the YouTube tape, starting at timestamp five hours, 1 minute, 24 seconds, that I made by listening to the tape at half-speed three or four times to try to get it done. So that's the caveat. The second caveat is, as noted by, uh, Mr. Scott, welcome, Mr. Scott, minutes are not a transcript. They are a reflection of actions taken, not a transcript. But with that said, I can read what I have. Uh, starting at timestamp, five hours, 1 minute, 24 seconds, Councilmember Whitman. My substitute motion is, and I meant to talk about this, but sure, I talked too long, but this issue started in part because I was concerned that our planning commission was composed of people primarily not appointed by the city council that is currently sitting here. But what I learned in talking to various commissioners is that there, prior to my ever making the suggestion that I should be able to select, there was a round of selections made by the prior city council, and there was a lot of concern that what, that that wasn't handled well, and it had very little to do with the functioning of the commissions, and had a lot to do with politics and arbitrariness. With that in mind, I want to spend time talking to our commissions about the proper selection process. So my substitute motion is that we thank Jeffrey Starkweather for his service, but let him step down, and that we work with the commissions on these rules, because there's been a lot of dissatisfaction, from what I can see, and there's a lot of confusion. But one thing that has always been present, is that the city council can decide to remove a commissioner if they think that's in their best interest. And so that's my motion.
Thank you, Matt.
May I comment? That was a lot. So, uh, I just want, anyone new to this here, to this topic, to know that Councilmember Ruhl and I voted no. Because I feel like it was completely wrong. Trial, you know, Jeffrey was in Europe, and the argument that he could tune in to Zoom at 2:00 a.m., it's absurd. It's, you know, that's not how we do good government, asking people on vacation in Europe to disrupt their vacation and have three minutes on Zoom. It's not, just not the same. To me, diversity is the key to good government. To dismiss a, a, a planning commissioner who's doing a great job, all the commissioners agree, he's, there's been no problems on the commission, no commissioner has stepped forward to ask for his removal. I want commissioners to be free to express themselves how they feel, and they're abiding by the rules, they're not policymakers. We can take or leave their recommendations. I do not want commissioners to fear that if the city council doesn't like their philosophy on housing, or art, or whatever, that they could be removed. I feel that his removal sends the wrong message. We want commissioners to be free to speak their mind. Okay? That, to me, is the essence of good democratic government. To the best of my knowledge, the problems that have come up with, uh, he's been accused of taking up staff time, James, our former city manager, James Vega, who's probably enjoying the evening off, is, you know, he made it clear that those problems were resolved. At least, to my way of thinking, he made that clear. I think it sends the wrong message to dismiss a, a great planning commissioner before his term is over. To the best of my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's unprecedented. In, in the past, if a council member was not, you know, we were not happy with a commissioner, whoever turn it was, could then dismiss that, that after the four-year term, he could be not, uh, what's, how am I, uh, he wouldn't be re-elected. But you don't dismiss them before their term is over, unless they've committed a crime, unless they've been absent too many times, and some, and sometimes they want to step down. You know, their, their, their life changes, there's good reason for them to step down. I have not heard that, so I'm not in support of Commissioner Starkweather stepping down. Um, I, and, and, and I did not vote for that. So, um, yeah, to me, diversity is the, is the key to good democratic government. And Jeffrey works very hard, he's very, very knowledgeable, he's very, he's retired, he's accessible, he has all the qualifications of a good planning commissioner, even if you don't agree with everything that he, uh, he states. He works well within, we have a great planning commissioning, com, commissioner, right, commissioner, commission, commission, excuse me. They work really well together. So I have not seen any reason to remove him.
So, so just, just a point...
Just a reminder to bring you through the chair, Councilmember Whitman?
Yeah, so just a, a point of order that, um, it's not on the agenda to discuss whether the decision was made correctly or not. And we shouldn't be talking about that. And, but I, you know, I will point out that, consistent with what I said about the intent and what people believed, as soon as we took our vote, uh, we were scolded, um, by one of our council members, uh, for the action we took. So it, I, I don't think that that council member understood that Jeffrey was going to have the option to stay on the planning commission, or she wouldn't have scolded us. So everybody understood, it was written down by everybody in summary fashion, that he was being dismissed. And my motion remains that if we are going to amend at all, and I don't think we should amend at all, but if we are going to amend at all, that we include that it was not the intent to give Mr. Starkweather the option to stay on the planning commission, and that it was the intent that if he didn't step down, um, he was going to be removed.
If I could jump in briefly, in the interest of avoiding further, further challenge over what a motion meant, can you, Councilmember Whitman, make a straight motion without an if? That, I think, may help, may help.
Okay.
Which, your, which could be a motion to approve the minutes as presented, or a motion to amend them in a specified amendment. And the motions, as, I'll just note, as, as drafted state, they do include the phrase, it was moved to remove Commissioner, Planning Commissioner Starkweather. So that may accomplish your goal, simply adopting the minutes as stated.
Well, that, that is, you know, that's the cleanest, is that, because that was the intent. So, um, I, my motion, I guess, would be to, um, adopt the minutes as they're stated.
Okay. And just, I would like to comment, because, um, piggyback on that whole idea of intention and intent. And I think the key, um, phrase in your original motion, Andy, was, uh, but one thing that has always been present is that the city council can decide to remove a commissioner if they think that's in their best interest. And so that's my motion. I think that is very clear, as, uh, our city manager stated. And the minutes are not a recording, they are, as you said. So, uh, we have a motion, clear motion, and we, and I will second that motion. Uh, could we have the roll?
Discussion, please, on that motion?
Just, uh, okay, uh, let's have Councilmember Ruhl, and then Mayor Protam Francina.
My problem with this is not what is in the minutes. It is what the motion was. The motion never said, remove Jeffrey Starkweather. Now, and my problem is, when we start talking about what we intended the motion to be, then we would have to vote on what the intent was. A motion is a motion. A motion is a language, it's got words. We need, if, if we want to bring this item back, that's fine. But for us to say that an official record of words that are clear actually can be disregarded because the intent was something different, and the intent was different for a few people, but not everybody, and I will say to you, I voted the motion. I voted the motion. And so...
I don't understand what you mean.
I voted, what everyone is saying is that the intent was there. Well, you know, after three hours of, of wanting to, wanting, I'm not, you know, I'm not really going to get into it. I voted the motion, which the motion was. My substitute motion, which nullifies the previous motion, my substitute motion is that we thank Jeffrey Starkweather for his service, and let him step down, and that we work with commission, bloody, bloody, blot, you know, dot, dot, dot. That motion, those words, are clear. I don't see how a city council can then decide that there was a different intent to that motion. That language is official. We voted on that language. We did not vote on what Councilman Whitman's intent was, although his intent was clear because we heard about it for three hours. But we voted on the motion. And for us to say, nope, we're gonna, not gonna vote on, we're not, we're gonna put that motion aside, and we're gonna say that the intent was this. We can always go back and re-agendize, and start this process the way it should have gone initially. And that makes the most sense, it has the clearest and cleanest way of moving forward. And we have heard from everybody here, that we are not moving forward in a clear or clean way. This is just more ambiguity, and as a linguist, as someone who studied linguistics and rhetoric for years and years and years, words matter, especially if they're an official record. That motion is an official record. I, I just can't see how we can then vote, well, what was really the intent? Yes, everyone listened for three hours, so we know pretty much, you know, we, we all walked away, but that's not the motion. And I will say, that is not the motion that Councilmember Lang voted.
Uh, Mayor Protam Francina, and then Councilmember Lang.
I'll let Councilmember Lang speak first.
Um, I just had a question for the city attorney and the city manager. So I think it, I think, given what we know about how the last meeting went, where this was agendized and we discussed it, um, I think if we do re-agendize this, this topic, it could be another really painful meeting that, I mean, you heard Nora talk about it. People came up to the podium to speak in public comments, and they were visibly upset. Some of them were at the point of tears. No, and, and for, for Mr. Starkweather to be here and listen to that, I think, I just don't think the city needs to, to go through that again. And at the same time, if that's what's fair, and that's what makes the most sense, then I'm open to it. But I'm just wondering, is there an alternative to discussing this, um, where it wouldn't take away from city business, or it wouldn't allow for a repeat of what happened?
Okay.
So my, uh, if I can speak, my motion, um, does a couple of things. If we stick with the language that's in the, the minutes currently, it still gives Mr. Starkweather, or anyone else, the ability to challenge the decision we made, or whether it's a real decision or not, based upon the transcript that, um, was presented. I'm pretty confident that so many people, uh, ended the meeting with the belief that it was a vote to remove Mr. Starkweather, that there, any, any judge reviewing it would view it that way as well. And I think that's the cleanest way to go forward, but I would defer to city manager or city attorney.
I, I can't honestly say that, um, that there's a public process I could recommend for, for an action where removal of a commissioner is one of the, certainly one of the options. You have to do that in public. It's a council action, and it's appointed by the council, it'd have to be removed by the council. And so you'd have to have a public, a public process. You know, there's all sorts of things that, that people can talk about, could have been done, you know, beforehand, but I don't know, at this point, you really are at a point where you either have to state intent in the, in the minutes, or decide to, to clarify in some other means. It, to me, it's, I think it's one or the other. And yeah, I agree with you, painful. The whole thing is very painful.
Well, we have a motion, and we have a second. Uh, are we ready for a roll call, please?
I'm still, I'm gathering my thoughts.
I had one more comment to add to the city manager's, and in response to Councilmember Lang's comment, if I could jump in. In terms of the straight legal process, as noted, the options are confirm the council's understanding in the minutes, one way or the other. If the outcome of that vote is that, is not removal, then we'd have to re-agendize it, if the council so desired. Uh, if the outcome of the minutes vote is clear, it's, the minutes were removed, then he's out, and the council could, as a separate from the, on the commission, or not on the commission process, look at some sort of a, um, restorative justice-type approach. That's an option always. That's not, wouldn't change the outcome, but could create a properly structured, and not structured by me, but properly structured space or forum to consider some of the interpersonal challenges, to find a solution there. Uh, that, not on tonight's agenda to put that together, but that's always an option, um, and has, has been successful in some places. Um, yeah. And then otherwise, of course, if the outcome of the minutes vote is a clear adoption of the minutes, the state remove, Mr. Starkweather was removed, then he has remedies in, in court and through the attorney general, as he may desire.
Thank you, Matt. Could you please restate the motion, Weston?
Yes. Motion by Councilmember Whitman, seconded by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Stix was the second, at 7:38, to adopt the minutes as received by council on the agenda packet.
Okay.
I have a, I'm sorry, I have a quick follow-up question for the city attorney, if I could. If Commissioner Starkweather were to, um, decide on legal action, any idea, ballpark, what that would cost us?
It would depend on how far I took it. Easily $50,000, if it was litigated to trial, less, obviously, if it settled earlier. Depending on the options taken, if the, if the challenge that was brought was purely a challenge to whether or not the motion effectively removed him, my advice to the council at that time would be to reconsider the matter, and make a clean vote, wherever the chips will fall, where they fall. But that would entirely moot the lawsuit. If he raises other claims, as he's claimed tonight, First Amendment concerns, et cetera, then that'd have to be litigated. Although I would note, the First Amendment case law on that is quite clear, just to add to the record. The Ninth Circuit in 1997 did rule in Lumpkin versus Brown, uh, 109 F third, 1498, that commissioners can be removed for policy reasons.
Right. And so I just, I have a very quick follow-up question. As you're, as you're...
Quiet, please. Quiet. We can't hear up here.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have a follow-up question. Um, so, the most recent, uh, email that we got from you about litigation was Pine Mountain, and where Ventura, we, we lost that because of lack of standing, from what I understand. Um, and what I understand is, we went in to that assuming that it was going to be a $10,000, roughly, ballpark, and it turned out to be closer to 50 or 80, um, for the, for the litigation on Pine Mountain. So I just want to be very clear, I also want to be very clear, that for every penny that we spend on litigation, that is money that will not go back into the city. And that is something we absolutely have to keep track of. We have a contingency fund that is dwindling, and we're only in one month of this fiscal year. So while that is a consideration, I still hold very firmly that the motion has to be, the record of the motion has to be what was motioned, not what was intended. So I, I, once again, for all of these reasons, um, I guess we are where we are.
Okay. We're ready for a roll call? Do you have one final comment?
I think that if we vote now, this will further divide the community. Obviously, a mistake was made, and I asked you to not do, you know, fairness...
Just a reminder that the agenda item is about, we're talking about the minutes, right?
The minutes. Well, but we're also going to vote whether to approve, you know, the, anyway, my motion is that we learn a painful lesson not to try commissioners when they're abs, you know, to have these kind of hearings when they're absent. My motion is that we start fresh, and that instead of the mayor writing a, a, one, a one-page report, you know, everything was based on, on your report, that we have staff do a proper report, properly state the problems. There was no staff report. There was just a, a one, was it one page, two pages? There was just a, a one, was it one page, two-page statement? And all the public comment advocating for the removal of Star, Jeffrey Starkweather was based on this one, on this report.
So you're making a motion to-
Yes, I'm making a motion to start over.
Okay. Is there a second?
So that would be a subsequent motion to not adopt the minutes and is a future agenda item to re, re-put on the agenda the question of whether Mr. Starkweather is or is not a planning commissioner?
With a proper staff, a proper unbiased staff report that states any, you know, the problem, it's not a biased two-page, that then, and then the public shows up in a frenzy. That is not the way to do good government.
Is there a second for Mayor Protem's motion? Okay, we will have roll call on the previous.
I will second it. If, if it requires my second, I will second it.
Okay, roll call, please, Weston?
So wait, yeah, can we restate the motion?
I can restate it. Motion by Mayor Protem Francina, seconded by Councilmember Rule, to not adopt the minutes as received by council on the agenda packet and to start over with a staff report.
Okay, roll call, please, Weston?
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Stix.
No.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
No.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on now to the rest of public comment. Let's begin with, and if, if you have already made your comment, just let me know. I have Lenny Clave, Carol Smith, and Colin Jones.
Needless to say, I am very pleased with the last vote, but it doesn't, it doesn't begin to cover the stench of the last meeting. One piece of paper here. To paraphrase Irving Berlin, "The meeting of July 11th is over, but the stench lingers on." I have met Jeff Starkweather once. We spoke for five minutes. I am not a member of the Democratic Club. I voted for Mayor Stix twice. The last time mostly because I couldn't figure out what Anton Williams was about and why he was running. The last meeting dealing with Mr. Starkweather was an embarrassment. You start at Mayor Stix, you start out every meeting calling for people to be nice. There's no way, in my opinion, that anybody who watched that last meeting can say anything other than, don't you feel the slightest bit hypocritical based upon what you allowed to happen at that meeting? What is there to make of the fact that the emergency nature of the meeting, of the action was farcical? You had an email that was one year old and nobody who spoke mentioned anything sexist that Mr. Starkweather had done before that email or after that email. And Jeff stopped mailing, emailing the city manager when the city manager requested that he do so six months earlier. And the planning commission members, including the, the chairman, said Jeff was not disruptive of the meetings. So what was the rush? What was the emergency that, that required action while Mr. Starkweather was out of the country? And what to make of the fact that nobody who spoke in support of getting rid of Mr. Starkweather had anything to say beyond what the mayor had written in her letter? Not one person had any experience with Jeff or heard anyone having any experiences with Jeff that supported the idea that he was a sexist or a disruptive person. Sousa tried to ask a member of the public if they had gone to a, a planning commission meeting. And Mayor Stix, you said, and people were all upset that you were interrog, that, that Mayor Protem was interrogating people, and you urged her not to do that. If I was a member of the city council, I would want to hear what the public said, but I would also like to understand the basis of their remarks, whether it was personal knowledge or just parroting what somebody else had said. Therefore, I think that, that Mayor Protem's question was critically important for a council member. When my, when Heidi Whitman's name was mentioned, you immediately allowed her to speak, yet you allowed people to rant on about Jeff for hours.
Thank you, Lenny. Next we have Carol Smith, is she still here? Okay. And then Colin Jones, and then Elena Poscarrella.
Good evening again. I still live at Taramina in the city. I also can't emphasize to you how important I think it is to know who your constituents are. We live in the city. It's fine, other people come, but they're not your constituents. So giving addresses to me was very important, very important. However, what, Ms. Lang, when I said to you a motion to reconsider, what that means is that you were questioning your, when you said yes last time, which means you're, you want to reconsider it based on either new information or, or, so that basically, you can do that if you vote, vote with the majority and the majority win. So if you were with the three people who said no, and then you get further evidence, you find out a lot of the people who were very emotionally involved, really, it, it was not based on fact, then you have every right to just say, I want to, I'm, I'm, I want to reconsider my, my motion. And then that, your yes on it goes away, you see? And then it comes up. So that was another tax you could take. I mean, Leslie suggested you go over it more, or, no, no, it was Sousa, and get more staff report. But the motion to reconsider is just what's that, that situation is perfect, is an example of it. So I just wanted to sort of educate you more about it, because you pretty know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. Next we have Colin Jones, then Elena Poscarrella, and then Nuri Ranaji. Did I pronounce that right?
Mayor, council members, welcome, Mark, and good luck. I've been here a number of times and it's usually to argue against something that the council is pursuing that I disagree with. Today's different. I'm here to ask you to consider how your governance is affecting our small town. I believe that your single-minded pursuit of an agenda is putting the harmony of our small town at risk. A wise man, a writer, a business consultant by the name of Peter Drucker, no relation to Joan, said, "Rank does not confer privilege or give power. It imposes responsibility." The citizens of Ojai have elected you to be their representatives. They have imposed this responsibility on you five. Is that not what you ran for? What have you given us in return? Platitude from the mayor about love, kindness, and making decisions using your heart? And then you sit there in your divisiveness, not using any of these things to meet any kind of justice? Not offended, it seems, when a fellow counselor uses foul language attacking another female counselor? No, that gets a pass. Using any excuse to remove anyone who disagrees with you? Ruining a man's name while he's unable to defend himself? Turning your back on one long-serving counselor and refusing to support another? What message are you sending to us all? And for Counselor Whitman, the only male on the council, showing exactly how a man in any position should not act, what exactly are you trying to show us? What kind of leadership is it that you're showing us? You should apologize for what you said. If you do, I for one, promise to never bring it up again. We are a forgiving people, actually practicing what Betsy preaches without needing her lectures. Counselor Lang, you seem to think your job is to walk a line between both factions, trying to please everyone, while I think genuinely trying to do the right thing. And that might be the most dangerous of all, because we do not know what you think, because your message is confusing. For Councilors Francina and Rule, I do not agree with all their positions. It's not important that I agree with them, but I believe that they are ethical, empathetic, and honest, fulfilling their responsibilities by focusing what benefits the citizens first, not some personal agenda or an agenda conceived by a small minority. Please, consider what you do into our town. It is obvious in every council meeting, on social media-
Thank you, Colin.
... and in the streets. Be more responsible. Thank you.
Next we have Elena Poscarrella, then Nuri Ranaji, and then Larry Steingold.
Good evening, council members, and welcome, Mr. Scott, to our town. This is my first time speaking to you all, and I can't tell you how much I feel for you. This is a very difficult place to be. And I'm new to this and I just started listening to the meetings and what was happening and, and to hear this, why am I here? Okay, first of all, I bought a home 30 years ago, lived here for a while, wasn't involved, and went and had a child, came back about five years ago. I live in Myers Oaks, so some people would say I'm not your constituent, as I've heard. But I feel that I belong to this community and what you're all doing is not a good example of how we should be towards each other. And I'm also an educator, I'm a teacher over at Valley Oak Charter School. And I think if our children were to watch these meetings and see how we as adults behave, what are, what is the message we're teaching them? What is the future of our country going to be? Right? So I also work with, I, I got training as a council trainer with the Ojai Foundation and the TOPA Institute. When we work in these retreats and meetings where there is discord and trying to bring peace to be, to our, to our groups, they work with police and community members. And in some way, I feel that that dynamic is here, that we have two opposing factions. And it's, it's kind of what's going on in our country. And what we're all doing is we're trying to bring peace to Ojai and start small so that we can spread it and be an example to our state, to our nation, to the world. What I was thinking about, some issues that were brought up here, was the issue of money for a pool, money to house homeless people. No, we're not even talking about housing them, we're just trying to give them shelter in a, in a place that might be closed down. This is so sad that we are having a debate about this right now, because 60% of my tax dollars go for military spending in this country. I don't know if you're aware of that. So that's a really big issue. We wouldn't be having these piddly little arguments if we weren't spending 60% of our money towards military engagement and war in the world. Just had to put that out there. So why, I'm just trying to say, one of the things that you, I say, I'm all new to this issue that happened here, but what was Mr. Starkweather's, what's his name? His intent, what was his intent when he wrote that email? Nobody, we didn't have a good discussion about that. But one of the things you mentioned, Mr. Whitman, was that you didn't like a political activist on the commission. That was your reason for him not being here. Everybody is a political activist here. I'm a political activist. We're all political activists, and that's why we're in government. So I'm letting you all say this was a great decision to redo everything, even though it's going to be painful. But we need to go through this pain and talk to each other and-
Thank you, Elena.
I want to go to the Agora Foundation. I think we all need to go to the Agora Foundation brown lunch bag. Let's all start going there, okay?
Thank you, Elena. Next we have Nuri Ranaji, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, and then Larry Steingold.
Hello, thank you. I don't know what to say, to say thank you so much for what you are doing. Or I am so sad that five, six in city council, we have such a division. This is the world we are creating. This is international city of peace. This is denuclearized area or state, especially Ojai. And so many of us are sitting here, talking so sadly, for hours and hours, in a divisive manner. This is our government from top to bottom. Rather than, I invite all of you to come to our place. Let's have some music. Let's have some poetry. Let's have some dance. Let's have some talk. Be human and care for each other and love each other. I wasted my time. My daughter has a school, you all know Natasha, upper Ojai. And she is so loving. And children there are so loving. Families there are so loving. Why? Why hours and hours and hours? And energies are wasted on putting each other down? People are good. I remember 50 years ago, I said, "Look around you." This is, the way I feel is love. This is love. The discussion was love. But everybody was saying, "No, you're wrong. Love is this. Love is this. Love is this. Love is this." And I start crying. I said, "No, none of that is love. The way I feel for all of you is love." So let us really, I mean, where is our, where is our enjoyment of life, of energy around us? Of such a beautiful environment? Why can't we fix that? Why can't you take care of homeless folks?
Thank you, Nuri.
Sorry.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next we have Larry Steingold.
Thank you, Nuri. That's an impossible act to follow. Thank you. The gentleman regarding Chaparral property that they mentioned regarding a swimming pool, it would be nice if the city created some sort of, maybe they already have, an ad hoc committee, because that property is going to be disposed of by the school department somehow, and it would be nice if we had control of it. So that seven and a half acres should be controlled and/or owned by the city, one way or the other. So that's something that I think everybody in town can get on board with. No, no, it's, okay, it's great. Thank you. In fact, we need more, more of that, that's for sure. But Chaparral, please put your oars in the water, because otherwise, we're going to be behind the curve when they come up with a developer or a deal that we're going to have to accept or fight, one way or the other. So I'd rather be on the controlling side. Also, I mentioned a couple of weeks ago regarding businesses in town not accepting cash. Please make it part of the ordinance. San Francisco has it, which I'm actually supporting San Francisco on this. But it would be nice, because businesses, it's legal tender, and it discriminates against those people who do not have credit, have bad credit, or don't want to borrow money to buy dinner. So, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any comments online, Weston?
No raised hands, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, let's take a five minute-
Madam Mayor, before we take the break, it may be wise to approve the other minutes from item 1D, which were not controversial, I expect, May 9th, May 22nd, and May 23rd.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Much appreciated, Matt. Okay, we will be back. Thank you. Okay, we will be back, thank you.
Okay, we are back. If you all could take your seats and come to quiet, please. Okay, we will move on to item, discussion item number two, feedback on a draft 2024-2028, citywide pavement condition assessment and five-year pavement management plan. Mr. City Attorney, we have a staff report?
City Manager.
I'm sorry, just getting used to it.
We do, and I'm gonna turn it over to Lindy Palmer, who has done a fabulous job with her team, and everybody's thrilled, I'm sure, that we've got this item on the agenda.
We are thrilled.
Well, I'm excited, too. I know, I will let him know. He's probably watching, actually. So this is a long-awaited, muchly anticipated, highly anticipated.
Here we go. She's ready.
So our long-awaited, highly anticipated, five-year PMP is here tonight, and I'm excited to present it. So the action, the item in front of you tonight is to, well, for us as well, is to receive feedback from you guys, approve the plan, issue an RFP so we can move forward with the design services for phase, or for the next year's plan for 2024. We're underway in the current year's plan, paving plan, so you should start seeing streets getting paved and all of that going on here real, real soon. So if the item gets approved tonight, we will issue an RFP to move forward and get next year's design project, next year's paving project under design. So I sort of want to take a second to talk about the life cycle of a CIP project and the time it takes. So if we get approval tonight to issue the RFP for the 2024 pavement plan, that sets us up for the next five years. We would be on this annual cycle. We would come to you every year at this time to issue an RFP for design services for the following year, and we would be awarding sometime in spring like we did this year for construction to begin about this time next year. So if this gets approved tonight, we will have six consecutive years of paving, which is awesome news. We haven't done a paving project in the city since 2019, which is a long time. We have, as you guys know, as I know, as all of those folks know, we have a lot of deferred maintenance. We gotta get started. So we had a design, or a consultant prepare this PMP for us. It's StanTech. They're a reputable firm. They're out of Santa Barbara. They're professional. They're using industry-standard software, the modeling program, to come up with these streets. So that process started long before I came on scene. It started in, I think it was December of 2021, rolled into 2022, and we are just finishing it up. So there's maps in your report. It's a rather lengthy technical report, and I want to talk a second about that, too. You got about 100 pages here. I've read it several times. You may have looked at bits and pieces. There's a lot there. But there is some good info, there's a lot of good information, but they have identified the streets and the order of the streets for the next five years. Now, obviously, it's not set in stone, but those are the recommendations, and that would be my recommendation. If there are some other streets that council would like us to look at in the design phase, we'd be happy to look at that. I know that, being in public works, one of the, you know, everybody wants their street done. And many, many streets in the city have not been touched for 20 or 30 years. It's been a long, long time. Lots of them are in poor condition. Something that, a message that I need to get out to you folks, as well as everybody in the, all of our residents, and I have been doing that as they come in, but it's very important to maintain our streets in good condition prior to them failing. The cost goes up exponentially. Intuitively, everybody thinks, let's start with the worst streets first, and then we'll come back and start all over. That's not the way it works. We need to maintain our streets in a good condition and continue maintaining those, and start interjecting some of these streets that have failed because of the cost. We don't have the resources to do all of them, the year one. But there's a table in your, in the report here, too, that talks about all of the failed streets, the streets that are below 20 PQI, which is the pavement quality index. Every one of those streets will be touched in the six, let's call it a six-year plan, the five-year plan plus the current plan. So every one of the failed streets gets added in at some point. So that's good news. So, yeah, so I think the big question that I hear more than anything is, when's my street gonna get done? My street's the worst in town, and maybe, maybe not. But we know there are many, so we can all agree on that. So I can open this up for discussion. You may have many questions, but my recommendation is to allow us to move forward. We can get the wheels in motion. We can keep it going for the next six years. Sometime in year five of the five-year PMP, so sometime in late '27, '28, we would be going through this process again. So these streets, we, staff will also be looking at these streets on an, before we design, before we design next year's, we will be looking at the streets and reassessing. So it's not completely, you know, concrete, but it's a game plan. It's a plan to move forward, which we haven't had for a long, long time. So I can answer some questions, if you have any.
Thank you so much, Lindy, and we liked your pun. It's not concrete, huh?
It's not concrete. Might be asphalt, but not concrete.
Any questions from council?
I have a question.
Councilmember Lang?
First of all, thank you. You are just, this is really exciting. I'm really happy that we're moving forward with this. So I had two questions. One is, you know, since this, since this, the proposal, the RFP was finished, there have been some innovations in concrete design, including more green, like greener options and things that would be more climate-friendly. Have we looked into any of those?
We would like to.
Okay.
The current project underway right now was under design prior to me coming on scene, so it was underway. We would like to implement as many green features as we can and move in that direction. I understand that's the council's desire and the community and my, I live here, too. But yes, we will be looking at those.
Great. Thank you. And can I ask one more question? The 2023 streets, which I have that plan as well, are those happening right now, or what is the schedule for those?
So they are happening as we speak.
Great.
So we are working on some of the preliminary, we've issued the notice to proceed. One of our, one of our, there's been a little snafu in the start, and we are having a little bit of a delay at the State Board, trying to get our stormwater plan approved. So we are on pins and needles. We, Jackie, sitting over here in the audience, her and I work together in Public Works, and we are checking our portal, like, on an hourly basis to see if it's been approved. So we are working on some preliminary items. We're working on some tree trimming that needs to be done for accessibility, for the equipment accessibility. So you will be seeing something probably in the next week or so.
Great.
It's on its way.
Is that what the yellow ribbons around the trees are for? Is that the tree trimming?
That could be part of it. There's an awful lot going on in town right now. Caltrans is working, Casitas is working, and we are working. There's a lot going on in town, but it could be, because we are identifying trees that need to be trimmed.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank, I'm resisting any kind of joke about a yellow ribbon around a tree. Any other questions? Councilmember Whitman?
So as I drive around town, there's certain spots that, you know, they're, it's not like an entire street, but there's a, there's a section that's, like, alligatored, earth is starting to come up between, you know, the cracks and, you know, is there a way that we can, you know, kind of spot treats? I know that there's cost efficiency issues to be concerned about, and I don't want to, you know, go overboard on that, but there are places that I think if, you know, one in particular that I'm thinking of is not slated to be improved until 2025, and I have concerns that there's going to be any pavement there by 2025. And so I guess my question is, is there a way for us to, you know, have a fund for, like, a dozen spots where we do 100 feet or something like that, just to take care of a particularly bad area and have, you know, obviously have the, you know, staff and consultants decide which are the most critical to take care of? The one in particular I'm thinking of, because I drive by it pretty frequently, is where Libby connects to Del Oro. And, you know, I have some friends who live in that neighborhood, and, you know, they talk about forebuying into town. So, but I've seen other, you know, spots since, you know, I got focused on this and thinking about paving, I've seen, you know, two or three spots around town where it's just, you know, it's just a little stretch that just is horrific.
Well, a couple of comments to that point. The PMP that was prepared, and if you've looked at it in any length, you'll see, you'll see, like, certain streets that show up many times. The report is segmented, so from block to block and a different treatment because of that very issue. But if you're saying that the particular street we're talking about doesn't show up until 2025, we also have a pretty significant maintenance budget that could take care of some of those options, some of those streets. And I'd be happy to take a look at them, each individual street, if you wanted to email me a list or something. But we do have maintenance money, funding, budget, for doing those things.
Okay.
Yeah. And let me just add one more thing. As you remember, when you awarded the contract in May this past, last fiscal year, what I would plan on doing on the next year's project, 2024, is to prepare a base bid and then alternates. So depending on what the low bid comes in at, you folks will have the option of selecting, if you wanted to appropriate more money, if that was what was needed, or pick and choose alternates.
Thank you, Lindy. Any other questions? Thank you so much, Lindy, and
You're welcome.
Thank you to James for working on that for so many years. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. First, we have William Wirick, and then Larry Steingold.
Couple of comments, just from my experience dealing with a few hundred thousand square feet of asphalt in various forms over the years. Number one, first of all, you got a real treasure here, and listen to what she has to say, even if it's counterintuitive, because we've needed that for a long time, to take a systems approach to our paving program rather than just a, as the immediate need. The life cycle costs of asphalt work is very much based on that systems approach, because if you just get reactive to what's bad, and let's just fix what's bad, your costs escalate exponentially, as you already said. We're talking eight, nine, 10 more times, expensive in terms of taxpayer dollars, in terms of the overall result of the quality of our hard surfacing in the community. Please be very careful on avoiding change orders. You know, I, you know, when I served on the council, I was very frustrated with change orders that were obviously based on carelessly-written specs. My, the worst ones were where the, all the base conditions were assumed just to be fine, even though your lying, you know, your lying eyes told otherwise. And so every, you know, there'd be all these change orders to, because the spec said the base was okay and it's not, and you know what that kind of change order can be. So I think you're gonna be very, very good about that. And then the second thing I want to mention is, again, just to reiterate, please make sure, and when she recommends repair and maintenance, please approve it. Because when we don't have a seal coating program, when we don't have a patch repair problem, when we don't have a crack repair program that works, then we lose our base. And that's what really escalates the cost. So there is a balance between fixing the really acute issues, but if you only look at the acute issues, which is what Lindy is talking about, you escalate your life cycle costs. You've got to find the balance of keeping what you have in, that's not terrible, from getting terrible, while you're addressing the really acute issues. So again, I'm very impressed, and please, when she, you know, when she requests a resource or a budget allocation that's maybe a little counterintuitive, please listen to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Larry Steingold.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer, thank you very much. I know I've been not a haunt, but almost.
A regular.
A regular, because I see pavement. It's part of my asphalt, right? The idea of $2 million being allocated for a budget that is already at 2.9 or 3 million for this year should be raised. Her $2 million suggestion, while great, should be at 3 million, because otherwise we'll never get the roads done. So please find a way to find the money, whether it's a new tax on the TOT, not a sales tax, or some tax or something where the money is specifically allocated to the roads and cannot be touched. And I urge the mayor and the city manager and the assistant city manager to stop micromanaging by any city counselor or anybody. Everything should go through, if it's a city counselor, let him talk to the city manager or something, but don't micromanage. I know the roads may be bad at Del Norte, and the roads are bad somewhere else, but if you tell her, and you tell her, and somebody else tells her, it's the city counselor telling the director, and she's got to listen to you. And that, it just keeps moving. And everybody jumps to the top of the line, because everybody knows somebody, right? Whether it's here, or Manhattan, or in LA. Everybody gets, jumps to the top of the line, because they know someone. So please, don't micromanage her business. She knows her business. Let her pave the roads and take the five-to-seven-year project and just make it a forever project, because that's what it is. It's 2 to 3 million dollars a year plus 10%. Ask Ras Musin, they give you a number. How much will it cost today to pave the roads, all of them? 30 million? Prepare them, 40 million? Okay. Work on that, but not a 10-year, 5-year plan, $2 million. You're already underwater. The roads are getting worse faster than you're fixing them. So please raise the amount you're gonna give her. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any comments online, Weston?
No raised hands, Mayor.
All right, let's move on to discussion. Who would like to begin with a motion?
So Lindy, Lindy, my question is, how do you figure the wear and tear of tourism on our roads? Like, are they paying their fair share for the wear and tear?
Well, the simple answer to that question is 100% of it is the TOT.
Yeah.
So that's the simple answer. Most people who live here don't go stay at the end. That's on the shoulders of tourism. But
So you're saying that tourism mainly, the tourists are wearing down the roads?
No, no.
They're paying for it.
That's not what I'm saying. They're paying for it.
They're paying for it.
We've got, I think the budget is, I think the 2 million, I think 1.6 is funded by Measure C. That's in the staff report. I'm not sure. I think it was 1.6 million. So that is TOT.
Yeah, the TOT.
But in terms of the wear and tear on the road, I have not seen an analysis that can, that can accurately produce that information for us.
And then may I ask another question? You know, I think that we're at a point
Microphone, please.
Oh, we're at a point, I think this council may be at a point in the future of reducing the speed limit citywide. Can you address, like, when people go faster, is there, I'm assuming there's more wear and tear on the road. Is that correct?
There is. There is more wear and tear on the road, the higher speeds, and the degradation. The structural integrity also gets worn, so there's a lot of elements involved in that.
Yeah.
So I think probably we would see some, not quite as much wear and tear on the road if we reduce our speed limits to 20.
Yeah, that's a very important point.
It's sort of hard to quantify that right now. It would require a further analysis, but I would assume it would be the case.
Yeah, I think that's a very important point. Thank you.
Other, no?
I was gonna make a motion.
Okay, yes, please.
I'm gonna make a motion to proceed to move forward with the execution of the plan.
Okay.
One second.
All right. We have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes. Motion by Councilmember Lang with, second by Councilmember Stick, I'm sorry, Councilmember Whitman, to proceed and move forward with the plan as proposed in the staff report. All right. Councilmember Roll?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yay.
May I just comment? I want to thank Michelle Panero for her letter, and I want to make sure that you received it. I'll make sure to forward it to you. It addresses how to do the paving in the most environmental way. I think this should, I'll make sure. Yeah, I'll either send it or have the city clerk send it to you. Excellent, excellent points that we need to consider for the future. I just want to make sure Michelle knows how much we appreciate her letter. If you haven't read it, it's very, very good.
All right. We will move on to, thank you so much, Lindy. Much appreciated and really grateful to you. Yes. Okay, let's move on to item number three, pending agenda items for city council. Yep.
In the consent calendar.
Yeah, that was item number one G, and that was approved as part of the consent. No worries.
Mr. City Manager, is there a staff report?
I'll just be brief, since most of this I didn't write. The council had directed some time ago that, that you wanted to take another look at the priority list, whatever you call it, pending agenda item list. And this, it's before you. The report that James did before he left is back in front of you, and there's a list of 36 projects, some of which I know what they are, but many of which I don't. I had, and seriously, and, you know, I've said this to somebody the other day, I've been accused of never seeing a meeting I didn't like. I'll sit here and listen to you all evening, if you would like, but I'm not sure that's the most effective way to deal with this right now. I would suggest, as I did in the report, that you schedule that priorities setting workshop that you've talked about in a few weeks, and give me time to get acclimated to what the projects are and talk to you all a little bit. I would love to be asked to facilitate it, if you would let me, and just see if we can't put together something that gives you a good feeling that we have a realistic priorities plan. I actually think you need two. I think you need one for the interim city manager for the period of time that I'm here, and then I think you need a longer-term priority list that goes beyond that, and that will be useful to the people who apply to be city manager.
Much appreciated, Mark. Any questions from council?
Yeah, so some of the pending agenda items, obviously, are extensive and complex, and some of them are not so. So would part of the process be to actually have, you know, sort of a long-term versus short-term? In other words, what ones are less complex that we could take care of, and we decide either to put those first, or put them last, or put them in the middle, intersperse them, just, I think that would be helpful as well, because some of them are and some of them aren't, and some of them are deeply connected with others and some aren't, so.
What I normally do, and this is why it takes me a little bit of time to do this, is I'll go through and get myself somewhat educated on what these are. I would ask all of you to provide feedback, at the risk that you're gonna identify 40 more. If there's anything that's missing here that should be, if there's things here that are really one topic and they're just showing up under two different labels, we can group them. But what I do usually is very brief descriptions of what each project is and what's entailed in it, and provide that as something to work from on the priorities exercise, so that it's not just a list, but actually a little bit of definition of each one as to what I had heard that the project is. In the exercise itself, you always want to try to identify urgency, where there's urgency, and maybe where there isn't. But you also want to, you know, identify work plan kinds of assignments out of the whole exercise. So, you know, some things really don't take much council time. Some things are just really a staff issue, and you just need to say, go do it, staff. And we don't really have to worry about agendizing time with the city council on those projects. And then other things really are gonna take some serious council time to go through alternatives. And so I like to try to identify with each of these what it is we're talking about. So that's the kind of preparation I would do before we got into it.
Any other question?
Yeah.
Councilmember Whitman, and then Mayor Protem Francina.
Go ahead, Susan.
Okay. Is the pickleball item scheduled for August 8th?
We're gonna talk about that under item four.
Okay.
Right next.
Okay, so we don't need to talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we talk about the next few meetings? Because it might be a while before we get, have
Not too many.
When are we having the workshop where we actually prioritize? That's one question.
I would say late August, early September.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're gonna be running too late in my time here.
Yeah, yeah.
So we really need to get to it relatively soon.
I like to do, sooner the better, always. I mean, do you have in mind, like, oh, you're leaving Saturday morning or Monday night? What do you have, do we have in mind?
What, day of the week?
Yeah, about day of the week, because I do
Whatever day you choose, I show up.
You'll show up? Yeah, but we don't want you to have to go back and forth and extra trip. That's a lot of driving.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna discuss that. And then, at this point, do we, are we taking public comment, or can we discuss? Because I see some items that are definitely my top priority, and I think I want to air it out with the council. Do we do that now?
Well, really, that's kind of the purpose of the priorities exercise, to do that.
Yeah, but I understand that, but I'm, what I'm thinking of is the homeless situation.
Yeah.
And I do feel that I'd like to discuss the possibility of putting, because these are health and safety concerns. And if the porta potty is too far away, I think a porta potty closer by is a health and safety issue, is a health issue.
You know, that's gonna be a tricky one. First of all, there's nothing agendized tonight to talk about it. I've, if the council wants me to deal with the porta potty issue, you can just tell me, and I can deal with it. If there is an issue about whether we want to put a porta potty on the grounds outside City Hall, then we probably need to agendize it and deal with it. I think it would be within my signature authority to do something like that. But if there's an objection to it, you know, there's, I'd put it out. I will tell you honest truth. I err on the side of trying to deal with the needs of people who are in these circumstances, and that's just me. Doesn't make me right. Usually, I let my councils tell me what they want, and I don't just blurt that out, but in the interest of time here. There have been places I have worked where people have objected to that on the theory that the more you create permanent campsites, the more you have difficulty trying to move people to where you really want them. So it's want them. So it's conceivable that someone could say, any of you could say, you know, "I really want to talk about this before we start plopping down improvements on city property that we may want to have a different strategy for." So I don't know the right answer for that, but we can either put it on a future agenda, because we really can't do an agenda discussion of that tonight unless it says porta potties, and I don't think it does. Or you can just direct me, and I'll take care of it, and then you don't need a council action on something like that, so.
Can we do that now, or do we have to put that on an agenda?
Let's, I, so the council couldn't vote tonight to direct the city manager to install a porta potty. City manager can state his intent, and he, unless objected to, will install one, and if there's no objections, he'll use his authority to do that.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, that.
And we should do that at, at the end of the meeting? Would that be the appropriate time?
What?
Or now, because we're discussing pending agenda items, so the question would be, do we put that item on the next agenda or not?
Okay.
I would give him authority to, to use his good judgment, to walk around, talk to people, if you're willing to do that with, I mean, I'd like to figure it out now, because I think it's important that people are not going to the bathroom under bushes, or that they're, it's impacting their health if they have to get to the toilet way over there. I, you know.
So my, my suggestion would be that, much like we get our planning director doing a planning director's, you know, discretionary, that Mark study the issue, do a very brief explanation of what he would like to implement, and then, you know, unless we say, "Hey, we need to get that on the agenda and discuss it," he goes forward and implements the plan.
Sounds good. All in favor?
Well, not voting on that.
We're not voting, but we have to agree to do that.
Unless anyone has an objection, that's what we'll.
Any objections?
But, but that's, does that sound right?
That sounds right.
All right, thank you, Mark. All right.
Can, can we include in that also, if, if it's not complicated, a hand washing station? I mean, these are health and safety concerns, yeah.
And you might be surprised.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let's move on to public comment on this item. Any public comments on Zoom? None in the house?
We have one raised hand on Zoom. Renee? Renee, you may unmute now. Renee, we'll give you one more chance to unmute. Last call.
Unmute.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I'm out of Ohio, I'm up in Berkeley right now, but I just wanted to add a couple of comments. I like the idea of what you were describing on how you would prioritize items and put them together and, and do a loose description of them. I do remember, or recalling, in past council meetings, that Rachel Lang had mentioned having climate action added to the general plan, and there was some discussion about whether it would be part of each of the elements of the general plan, or a separate climate element added to the general plan. And James Vega was gonna get back to the council after talking with the general plan consultants and put together a cost estimate, and that is one of my areas that I'm following, and I know Rachel and several other people are very much wanting to see something in the general plan. So I didn't want that to get lost, and so I'm just mentioning that now. I just see something about general plan, but I don't see anything about climate action being added to it. So I wanted to make that comment, as well as the housing element of the general plan, that seemed to be a priority in the last few months, and James was saying that he was going to run things through the housing, the state agency, and they had volunteered to help, but there was a timeline, or something was on the critical path. I'm not sure where the housing element is, so I'm just adding those as on your to-do list, Mr. City, interim city manager, to follow up with James, or somehow be able to get the housing element and climate action as part of it sorted through. And then also the speed limit. We had just talked about it, and I didn't see the speed limit on there.
It's, it's number seventeen, it's for grand, but I wanted to make it, you know, for more, more citywide.
Yeah, though citywide speed limit, and also have it be part of, there's many people, and myself included, who are very concerned about e-bikes and speed limits, and what we can do to manage e-bikes where people are not able to go bidirectional on a bike path, and they are using the bike path bidirectionally, even though it's designed to only go one way. And that was, it, it's a big safety concern, especially in front of our high school, and I'd hope that we could get something to.
Thank you, Renee. Is that it, Weston?
That's all on Zoom.
Yep. Well, I think our city manager wants to make a comment.
I'll just very, very quickly. I think all of those are certainly deserving of being on the list, and I would further define them in that way. And we're about to, I've asked Lucas to prepare a report to the council, to put something for discussion on the table, how he would recommend we move forward to complete the general plan. I'm sure the council will tweak it, but I wanted to have something to put on the table for you to comment about. So we're, we're gonna bring that in, unless you tell me in this exercise that general plan is suddenly way down at the bottom. We plan on bringing that in pretty soon, so.
Thank you. Chair Akins, I didn't have a card.
Oh, I mean.
It's okay. Save the paper, it's okay.
Yeah, just real quick, and two of you know this is gonna happen. So we, there, I attended a meeting with Kathy and her group. They had a beautiful map, I circled the one, parts that were landmark. We started, they were talking about, "Well, what do we do with the Carriage Barn?" I said, "Has anyone ever been in there?" Nobody had ever been in there. I've never been in there. So I will, just along the path, because you, you were just talking about it as one of the items. So we do have two groups that are going in tomorrow morning on kind of an arranged tour. Two of the council people will be joining us in the morning. I, I believe that if we need to do that, we've now made an arrangement with Public Works, if we need to do a further tour, I believe that we can set that up. So I just wanted to give that quick update while you're talking about that.
All right, thank you very much, Brian. I guess that's it, public comment, move on to discussion. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. So, we've got, so, can we, when we do the workshop, is, I would like to see related items together, such as pickleball recommendations and the Soul Park agreement with county, and maybe some other items. And my understanding is that the pickleball recommendations are on August eighth?
We're gonna talk about that on the next item.
We still have to talk about that. Okay, so at this point, we're not going to prioritize? We're going to wait for a workshop?
I, I would prefer you wait, because I won't even know what you're talking about on half these things.
Okay.
And, yeah, give me input, give me your notes as to things that really belong together, and what's missing, and, you know, give me all that input, and I can talk to you, but I'll put something together that, as well as I can, reflects what I think the council wants to talk about.
All right, may I ask, are you saying that you'll meet, that we can send you an email based on our understanding of what's priority, or what could be grouped together?
Email, notes, carrier pigeon, whatever, whatever means you can, yeah.
But not a, it's, you know, one of us to you, as opposed to all of us, 'cause we potentially run into some problems.
Yeah, I, I can't do a group kind of thing, so you're just giving input to your city manager.
Yes.
I, I love having this list. Gives me peace of mind that it hasn't disappeared, you know, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that you are, you are okay with us adding items to this priority list?
I think the first thing that we do with something like this is when you put, before the day of the workshop, I'll have sent out an item, or a list of items. And if the council wants to take items off the list once you start the workshop, then sometimes that happens. Usually it doesn't, usually they just get ranked. So, yeah, I'm absolutely okay with it myself.
Okay, I just wanted to point out that the list of pending agenda items were all things that needed to have a second.
Second.
Yeah, to, in order to make, in order to make an item an agenda item.
Oh, got it.
As these are.
Yeah.
It, it wasn't, you know, one person will email somebody, but it had to be through the process of agendizing, and we can choose to do that or not, I just wanted some clarification.
Yeah, I just, my feeling is that when you do the whole list as a council, then you don't need a second, because you've, you're doing it as a full-body direction.
Okay, and so emailing, I mean, it's just the, emailing you things that we would like to have added.
Perfectly fine.
And then it will come, it will come up for agreement at the priority workshop?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay, uh, someone ready to make a motion?
Wait, wait, did we set the date?
Well, uh, Mark said that would be end of August, beginning of September.
If you want, when we get into this next item, when we're looking at the calendar a little bit, if you want to pick a date, we could do that. I think all of you probably need to check your calendars, but.
Okay, great. Uh, motion?
Well, my, what, what, are, what's, are we approving this, or go ahead?
I'll, I'll propose a motion that we, um, direct the city manager to set a date at the end of August or Septe-, beginning of September, where we hold a workshop for our priority settings discussion.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a question.
Okay, we have a second.
My question is, wouldn't it be prudent for us to let the city manager know now if we're available in August or not? I, I would, my feeling is, we're so far behind, and I would like to do this as soon as possible, and I'm available anytime in August, I don't plan to leave town, but I don't know if other people are going to Europe or anything like that.
The next item is talking about summer recess, and so.
So at that point, we can set a date?
Yes.
Okay, uh, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Are we approving?
Um, to have the priority workshop.
Yes.
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 You need a roll call?
Yeah, roll call, or we just have eyes?
It's up to you.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Whitman with the second by Councilmember Lang to direct staff to set a date, either end of August or early September, to hold a workshop for a priority setting.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful, thank you, Mark. All right, we will move on to item number four, discuss city council's summer meeting schedule, including possible canceling of a regular meeting, or dedicating meetings to special meeting topics. Is there a staff report?
I was recommending that unless one of you's got vacation plans, that we don't cancel any meetings in August. Certainly, if somebody's got plans, I, I'm sorry, you should not change your plans, but there's so many things to do, I just don't know how we get things done in the time I'm gonna be around unless we keep moving. One, and the suggestion, which we wanted to get council input on, the mayor and I talked about this, was using the August eighth date as a standalone for the pickleball issue. I learned how to spell pickleball in the last week, but I don't have solid understanding of all the issues, but you all probably do. And the idea was that a lot of people probably would, would appear for that, and it might be an opportunity to, to do that. I would ask that you allow us to still have a consent calendar, we'll try not to load it with things that are so controversial, we know good and well they're gonna get pulled, but, but that would be one option for dealing with, with the first meeting date in August. I would throw out, if you're looking for a date for the, the other topic, August twenty-ninth is a, is a fifth Tuesday, and we might, without getting in the way of our agenda process, you know, that's what's hard on staff, is, is when we lose a date, and we have to still put agendas together. But in a fifth Tuesday, there's a little more flexibility there, and, and that's sooner than later, and it's, and it's a date that might work. If anybody's got Labor Day, long Labor Day weekend plans, that won't work, but if, if you don't, then maybe that would be a good date.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mayor Protem?
I just want to recommend that we.
Of course, we're on questions, and then we have to take public comment. Any, any questions? Any public comment on this item, Weston?
No, no raised hands.
Okay, let's move on to discussion. Mayor Protem?
My, my recommendation is that we go around and find out everybody's plans for August, and, and see if we can get caught up. I, I mean, I want to, I'll start by saying that I don't plan to leave town, and I can come every Tuesday night if necessary. I want to get caught up. My number one priority, I mean, this list, some of this has been on this list for so long, I'm gonna have nightmares if we don't get through it. I'm just really, really eager to get things done. Eager.
Well, I, I would echo that, and so we, I would, I think we should keep the August twenty-second, that's our regular meeting. The twenty-ninth works for me for the priority, and if everyone's okay with the, that was suggested to me by a few people, having a standalone pickleball meeting on the eighth.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have discussion on that. So, the way it stands now is, uh, the two previous council members who were on the Soul Park Committee are no longer on it. This council has very little understanding really of what the agreement is, or where that agreement stands, because midway through, not even midway through, most recently, the Park and Rec Commission has asked to be a participant, at least to give opinion. The problem with that is, of course, is the Park and Rec Commission can't meet, because they do not have a quorum. The second problem with that is that unfortunately Luis is leaving us, so we're gonna have no Park and Rec Director. We, we, in February, okay, well, oh, okay.
He's not leaving till February?
Okay, so that's good, yeah, that's good.
That's important.
But I, I think what's also important is, is that we reconstitute the Soul Park sort of, you know, committee that is in, in discussion with the county, because, you know, it's possible that those things that were negotiated, I mean, the Park and Rec Department doesn't like some of the things, like the fifty-eight thousand dollars that we would be paying annually to the county for the use of that park, you know, it's a one-year lease, so there's a lot of, a, and we don't actually know the history of how that MOU was developed, where it actually is in development. We don't have a Park and Rec Department that can actually speak to it, and so this whole idea, and as well the reason that, that it doesn't, that I would like to postpone this, is that I am trying to figure out various solutions and options, and some of it, you know, has to do with school, the school district property, and potentially the use of that, and they are in their process of deciding, you know, how their property is going to be used, most relevantly Matilah, and so they have to go through their process. So all of these options around where pickleball can go, and how it can go there, I would like us to, before we have, I mean, we could have, we could have a meeting, we could hear, we could hear it all, but we've had a lot of meetings, and we've never come to consensus yet, so I'm more inclined to have us work at least first on some sort of staff report on options and timelines. For instance, if the school district is not going to decide what they're gonna do with Matilah for a year, it doesn't make sense for us to be talking about that in two months, you know, that, so it's complex, and there's a lot of moving parts, and there's different timelines, there's different amounts of money, you know, the money that the multi-use courts at Soul Park, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was gonna be budgeted over the next two and three years, has now been gifted to us from. has now been gifted to us from the state. So that frees up a potential, so there's, my point being, and I will, I will cut it off, is that there's an incredible amount of moving parts, and there may, may be a better way to do this than to actually open, open up, you know, a public comment and a workshop that is not geared towards solutions, but is once again geared to, towards the same things that we have heard for the last three years, which is no and yes. We don't want this, we do want that. I, I think we need to try to, once again, not have that energy flowing back and forth. And so that would be my recommendation, is that we work on alternatives. We put a committee, we put back the two-person committee that is negotiating with the county. We need to do that. And also, you know, the Park and Rec Department needs to be reconstituted. I mean, the commission, excuse me, needs to be reconstituted. They, if they're not part of this, we'll be back in a loop.
Yeah.
Mayor Proton?
I was going to recommend something similar, that, that the August meeting would include an update from the Park and Rec, if they're ready for that. You'll have to find that out.
They can't meet.
And, huh?
They can't meet.
Okay, well.
They don't have a quorum.
They don't have a quorum, correct. They are down members.
So, so I think we need to investigate, because this is so important. If they're not able to fulfill the, the task that we put before them, so much time has gone by. By now, there should be a report from Park and Rec. Plus, I know that people are, that, that, that some, my mind is a little bit blank, but we are discussing the Matilahah, the situation with Matilahah, with members of the school board. You know, that's happening, so I, I mean, I, I think we need to determine if we have enough factual information to make a standalone meeting August 8th worthwhile. I was advocating for that because I foresee a lot of public comment, but we would be doing this, the public, a disservice if we didn't have our, our ducks in a row, so to speak.
So.
So, so we have to figure out, we have to figure out what's, what, if we can get, we need to figure out the status of the, how far has Park and Rec gotten? Can't we get a report? Even if they can't meet?
I, I can speak to that a little bit.
And I would just caution briefly, because the, tonight's agenda item is whether or not to have a meeting on August 8th.
I apologize, yes.
Not, not a lengthy discussion of pickleball.
Okay, so I, I'm going to make a motion that we, we detain, it's not detain, it's.
Continue.
Continue, delay that particular public meeting just because we don't, we do need, I'm going to make a motion that we delay that public meeting for the reasons that I have stated before.
So question, are you saying that on the 8th, we still have a, a regular council meeting, though?
That is not part of my motion, one way or the other.
Could I add a friendly amendment?
Yes, absolutely.
Because we do have a lot to do.
I would like to discuss.
Yeah, I need to discuss. I don't have enough information.
I haven't had a chance to talk yet, so. I would have a concern that there are members of the public who have been advocating for the closure of the court on a, and I, and I haven't made any decision whatsoever on that issue, but they're advocating that we should be closing or at least scheduling that court for closure because of what I'll describe as essentially nuisance issues for the people who live near the City Hall Court. And so before, I think voting to push the issue off potentially is, you know, a no vote to them. But I absolutely want to have enough time to have a thoughtful meeting. And I also think that it's important that we revisit. Now that we have a new city manager, I would like to get advice from the city manager about the proper way to negotiate with the county. I don't know, I mean, my impression is that there's been some degree of lack of satisfaction when we send off a city council member or two to meet with the county on any type of formal negotiation basis. So I would love to hear recommendations about how to do that. I recognize that maybe today isn't the day when we can do that. But, and I think Matt's about to say he can do that today. But, so I wonder if maybe the 8th is a day that we talk about logistics as opposed to solving the pickleball, you know, issue and making a plan, so we make sure the public knows, we're not going to decide this, but we are going to decide, you know, when and the, how do we un, you know, what's, what are the best approaches? I wonder if the, you know, if the county, I can't, I guess I can't really discuss this, but I, I'm really wondering if the county is not being the best negotiating partner that we could have for doing something that seems to be very much a public benefit for both city and county residents, that we don't hear other approaches about how to address as opposed to this, you know, fee arrangement with the county.
Would you like to make a substitute motion, then?
Could, and could you clarify the motion?
Yeah, so I, yeah, I haven't made a, I haven't made a motion, yet those are comments.
Did the original motion get a second?
Did not.
Okay.
So my, what was the original motion? The original motion was to continue the August 8th meeting as far as having public comment and, and, but not, okay, so, so that's the original, that's the original motion. If there is a sub, with, with a friendly amendment that we would still have the August 8th meeting, but.
There is no second, though.
Yeah, right, so, so we, we, yes, because we got into discussion. If nobody wants to second it, that's also fine, you know.
I don't know. It just seems to me that there, there is a reason to have an August 8th meeting. The Soul Park, I'm concerned that, how long has it been with the Park and Rec? It seems like a long time.
Mayor and council, we are, we are gone too far here. I'm going to jump in.
Okay.
The question has to be answered, do we have the meeting on August 8th or not? That's a yes or no question. There are two, hold on, there are two choices. Yes or no. Second, the question is, is the August 8th meeting to be dedicated to a discussion of pickleball or not? We can't debate the item anymore. Those are two questions that need to be answered. There's a motion on the table that would delay pickleball, but still have the August 8th meeting. That motion, if it gets a second, would be on the table. If it doesn't get a second, then it dies. And no more discussion of pickleball as a merits issue. We're already, we want to stay within the bounds of the district attorney.
Thank you, thank you. Is there a second for Councilmember Rule's motion? All right, is there another motion? Someone?
So, just as a discussion issue and getting some feedback on, I would like to see us have some feedback from staff more on the logistical issue. We can do that on August 8th. We'd have to make it very clear to the public that we're not going to be deciding thumbs up or thumbs down on pickleball. Is pickleball good or pickleball bad? We're not doing that. We're, we're, we're getting logistical advice about how to move this project forward to when we can have that meeting.
Is there a second for that motion?
Can, can, can we amend it?
Well, first, is there a second? Okay.
My, my amendment would be, God, my mind just went totally blank, but it's very important. It'll come to me. I, I would like, the, the public deserves an update on what we are doing. There should be a thorough, comprehensive update on the places that we're looking at, even if we don't know. You know, there should be, by then, there could, even if it's not in the staff report, there could be someone at the podium from the school board that could, or somebody could give a, a status report. I mean, we, we need, the, the, a lot of time has gone by. I do believe we need, that we owe the, the public a, a pickleball status report, even if there's no resolution yet. And then we, we, if the city, if, I don't know how to resolve that the, that the, the Park and Rec Commission has taken so long to come back with the Soul Park. I don't, I, I think the.
That can't be resolved by August 8th. I could offer a suggestion. It would be inherent in Councilmember Whitman's motion that the report would include a status update on all issues.
There you go.
All of the different pieces of the pickleball puzzle.
And I intended.
Staff will provide an update.
I intended that.
On all of them, some of which will, the update will be in process, awaiting direction.
We can ask the school district to attend. We can't compel them. I urge you not to try to do that as part of the motion. If it makes sense later, we can talk about it, but to make it part of the motion, don't do that.
It would be a simple update, and as I understand the motion, it also is to clear, be clear to the public that the item on August 8th will not include a decision, one way or the other, about the City Hall pickleball court.
So can I?
I will second that emotion.
Can I just clarify? So, so what we're going to basically be trying to do, and I, and I think this is fair and good, is have an informational meeting where all of the options and all of the things in play that need to be considered as we move forward with the decision will find its way to a public hearing, and all of the council members will then be apprised of all of the complexities around figuring this out. Is that correct?
That's my plan.
Perfect, all right.
And I also.
In two weeks.
Well, and as well as, you know, my thought was that we hopefully would get recommendations about, you know, we have, we have these different concepts about where we can expand pickleball for the community. I would love to hear some advice at that meeting about a path forward on doing those.
And, and just between us and the world, some of the issues may actually involve real estate negotiation, which may be eligible for closed session discussion and would be wise to be done that way. So there may actually be pieces of those logistics that are appropriate in that forum as well.
Great.
And the last thing I'll add is the council could, in that meeting, provide direction on process. For example, to reform an ad hoc committee, or to rejigger the request of the Park and Rec Commission, or to form a different ad hoc committee. That'd be all part of the puzzle, but not to make that final decision about the City Hall Court.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
One more question. Can, can we ask, or does it have to be in the motion, or is it automatic that we ask Park and Rec for a status report?
That's not possible because the commission cannot meet.
I know, but so far, can't they?
It's not possible. What we can do is the individual commissioners could come, if they want, and speak their piece at public comment. But because the commission can't meet, we can't ask the commission to give us an update.
You know, one of the things you all do sometimes is equate Park and Rec Commission and Park and Rec Department. And we can get staff to inform us on what staff is aware of, of all of that. And that's the appropriate thing for us to do at this time. It wouldn't be appropriate, I don't think, to try to get any kind of report from a commission that can't meet. So, but we, the staff can give us a good summary of where it is. We'll be able to do that.
May I ask, or do you know, is the commission meeting at all in August?
I don't, I've been told that because, what is it, they've got three members, two of them will live outside the city?
Correct.
They lack a quorum, so they cannot meet until the council makes new appointments, which can't happen until at least a council meeting, when an appointment is made.
So, no, they're not planning on.
They're not meeting in August. They can't.
Could you run that by me again?
Sure.
They no longer have a quorum?
Right. Right now, the, the Park and Rec Commission has three members, of whom two, three of seven. So that's not four, so they cannot meet.
Okay, so at the end of this meeting, can we discuss that when we go around?
It's not on tonight's agenda. A future agenda item could be added to have a discussion at a future meeting about making the necessary appointments to reconstitute the commission so they can meet.
Okay, but could you explain at this point how that works? Because I thought that if there's a vacancy, that we're made aware of it, and we, we start appetizing.
I'm going to suggest we talk about it at the end of the meeting. We have a roll call right now. Roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, and for the clarity of the record, could I please have it repeated back by either Councilmember Whitman or City Attorney Summers?
That on August 8th, we address pickleball more from logistical and recommendation standpoint from staff as opposed to making decisions about closure of courts or, you know, that general issue. We're going to be talking, that was a bad motion, wasn't it? Okay, that we meet on August 8th, and we receive logistical advice concerning the status of the pickleball issue and recommendations about moving forward.
Right. Without council action, as stated. Roll call. Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Francina. I heard it. Mayor Proton Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, let's move on to councilmember reports. Any reports, council?
Yeah, I have a couple of reports.
Councilmember Rule?
So just a question, are we, are we still going to discuss the recess issue? Do we need to vote on that, or?
I don't think you need to vote if you're not canceling anything.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to go around and.
So I was just going to make a comment that I am in agreement with the other council members who have said that we haven't moved quickly enough on some of our things. But I do like the idea of, of potentially having a meeting off. And so I would like us to eventually look at, you know, like an October recess and see how much we can get done through September.
Well, traditionally, we have one meeting in November and one meeting in December, as far as.
Okay.
Is that right? Yeah, that is right. And, and I just have a.
Oh, because Thanksgiving might fall on, yeah, the Thanksgiving week.
That's been the tradition, but we can talk about that in the future.
But let's, let's bump, let's bump whether there's a additional recess to some subsequent meeting, because I think we're all committed to doing meetings through September.
Okay. Councilmember? Reports? Are we ready to move on?
I, I have a question. Are you, I know you're new, but usually the city manager does tell us what's on the future agenda, the next agenda. So we're just, we're only going as far as August 8th.
We don't know yet beyond that what's on the agenda?
I don't know yet beyond that, but when I do, I will let you know.
Can, can I ask a question about, so as a part of this discussion, we talked about the 29th of August as a potential workshop day. Would this also be a time when we could make a motion to, to move forward with that, with having the?
Yes.
I would, I would like to make a motion that we move forward with having a special meeting on the 29th. That would be our priority setting meeting.
Do we do it at 4:00 in the afternoon?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's for me. Is that okay with you, Andy?
Anytime.
On Tuesday, okay.
Tuesday, the 29th.
Is there a second for that motion?
Yes, yes.
I can't mess with your court schedule.
No, let me, let me look real quick. I think I can.
And in the interim, City Attorney Summers.
Yes.
If someone were to go on vacation during a meeting, it is, it is the same protocol whereby you need to have, give access to any public member, and you need to say where you are, but you, you can indeed do that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, participation remotely on a scheduled vacation is possible if the remote location is publicly accessible, listed on the agenda, which means we need to know it at least when the agenda goes out. And there's a ability for the public to comment from that remote location if anybody showed up.
Thank you.
The 29th is potentially a problem for me.
Well, you know, how about any other day that week?
Yeah.
I can do a different day that week. Let me look real quick.
And can we do it the sooner the better? Does anybody?
I don't really need until then.
Yeah, the 30th.
Yeah, the 30th, I could do the 28th, the 28th is a Monday, the 30th is a Wednesday, I could do either of those, and, yeah, that's 31st would be a problem, so.
I would suggest the 30th.
The 28th or the 30th.
I would suggest the 30th because interim city manager, Mark Scott, usually travels on Monday, so it would be nice to give him some breathing room, even if he were to make it here on time. So I would suggest we do the 30th on Wednesday.
It would save me a night in the hotel, but it would cost you TOT.
We'll go with that.
Okay, so, so you would prefer Wednesday over Monday?
Yes.
Very good.
So is there a motion for the 30th, Wednesday, 30th?
I'll make a motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, so, just the public is clear, it's Wednesday, August 30th.
Okay, now we, yes, we will move on to city councilmember reports. Councilmember Rule, you had a report?
Yes, so I went to the V-COG meeting, and very good news, the state has given, well, you know, has given funds to the telecoms to ensure that 95% of all residents in Ventura County have superfast broadband. There's some question about what superfast broadband actually means when you're building out, and there was a lot of questions. When I worked, when I was on city council in Massachusetts, we built the largest municipally-owned fiber optic network in the country at that time, with a collective of 26 small towns, who each funded it themselves with grant money from the state, rather than giving it to the telecoms to build out. But, in this particular case, that is moving forward, the money has been allocated, and we are hoping that 95% of all Ventura residents will have super high fast broadband within a year and a half. Yeah, I mean, I can, I can, I'm sure, I've been, oh yeah, I went to the homeless meeting in Ventura County today, where I think it was 1.6 million was appropriated to, for homeless shelter and permanent housing for homeless in Santa Paula, Fillmore, and the unincorporated areas around Peru, so that will happen, and I was amazed at how receptive the Ventura supervisor, Ventura County supervisors were to appropriating that money, and I did make a public comment that Ojai loved the model, and we planned to, also, we were in discussion with Matt Livia and others around, could we also get a matching grant for that? So I think we moved that ball a little bit down the field today, and that was a good, that was a good move.
Thank you for attending, great.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Rule, Councilmember Lang?
Yes, so I have two things. One, the Film Society has free movies on Friday nights, and the first one is this Friday, and this is an event that the whole community is a part of. A lot of restaurants in the area are doing food, that have food offerings, you can get to-go boxes of things, and the Film Society is doing such great work, they've chosen an incredible lineup, and, and so I just wanted to announce that. And then also, on August 5th, there is an event in Ventura County that is for youth, so anyone who considers themselves young. They're going to be panel discussions all day long, it's at Cal Lutheran in Ventura, Simi Valley, I believe it is, and they're going to be panel discussions the whole day about, with elected leaders, about how people can get involved, how, how young people can get involved. And I'm going to be on two of those panels, one about women and women's issues, and then one for LGBTQ issues. So I encourage everyone who is young or young at heart to get involved and to come.
Thank you, Councilmember Lang. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Councilmember Whitman?
If I just found out that I qualify for the help of Ojai Transportation for the Elderly, can I still go to the youth?
Are you going to try?
No, I'm, no, I do, I do have, this is, this is a little bit awkward, but I'm on, I serve on OB-GMA, and I think this is important information, but I am actually not participating in what I'm going to report about, because I have been an attorney involved in the litigation, but OB-GMA has been invited to participate in the mediation, which I think, you know, the message there is that as they're trying to resolve Ventura River and Ojai Groundwater Basin issues, they're now finally reaching out to the management agency for the groundwater basin to talk to them about those issues, and stay tuned to see what eventually happens with that.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember. Anybody else?
Well, you'll all be, I know you're all going to be really happy that I'm living in District 4, Taurina, and it was actually, I signed the lease for it back in, I'm March or April, there was a move-out date scheduled, and of course, the person living in the room sharing the house could not find a place. And then I got the news about a week ago that she, I said, "Don't even tell me when you think she's moving, tell me when she has moved," because I've had so many false alarms. But I went and the room was empty, and I, I, all we had to do was change the date on the lease. So my 20 months it took, because, you know, it's like musical chairs, there's so many people applying, and then people, so many times, I'll write a story, I won't go any further, except for to say that at least four or five times, I thought I had something, and then the person just changed their mind. You know, that either a family member would move in, or whatever, something would happen, but anyway, that saga is over.
Well, congratulations, Suza.
Hey, Suza. I live to tell the tale.
City managers report?
I have, I have a quick update.
I'm sorry.
I have a new puppy.
Congratulations.
Who has torn me apart, but I have a new puppy.
Adorable, adorable puppy.
Yeah, she's just, has made my life so good.
Congratulations.
Also, I, I forgot to mention, I am doing a workshop on the 29th on animal rights and also the rights of nature, so that we can start to think about how we reconceive what we think of. So this is the 29th starting at 10:00 a.m. at Kent Hall. So I think I sent out announcements to most people, and I'll be posting again on social media about the workshop. So it's 10:00 a.m., lunch will be, I mean, breakfast will be provided, and it'd be great if you brought something, if you wanted to come, thank you.
This, this Saturday?
It's this Saturday, the 29th, at 10:00 a.m. at Kent Hall.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, city managers report?
Just very briefly, the RFP that's out for recruitment firms for the city manager position, I think it's Friday that the RFP responses are due.
That's correct, July 28th.
Yeah, we have one so far, unless we got one today. And, you know, there, there are reasons why some of them are not, not applying, but I will tell you, the one that I've seen is a very good proposal, so we're in pretty good shape. If we can, I'd like to see if we can't move it to get it on the August 8th agenda, if, if we're able to. And if we get one, it might be real easy. If we get more than one, we may want to, this is the council's recruitment, so you may want to decide on a selection process, but we could at least put it on the agenda for that discussion to take place. The only other thing I'm going to say tonight is that I started this meeting off sitting in this chair and determined to support my core, whatever Councilmember Rule told me, and I tried to sit up straight and I lost. And I want people to know that I didn't slouch in this meeting, my chair slouched. And so anybody that took issue with me looking like I was slouching at the council meeting, it wasn't me, it was the chair. Thank you.
Note taken.
I can confirm that that chair does the same thing to me, and I switched out my chair.
I don't know.
I think Weston, he gets me a special chair each week.
All right, let's move on to future agenda items, we're not, we're, we are going to hold off for the, until the priority workshop, correct?
Yeah, if there was anything, anyone, if there was anything anyone was, thought important to get on the agenda between now and then, we certainly would expect you to tell us. If there's anything tonight, you know, please let us know, but otherwise, that's what we're doing.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
If I may ask for a clarification from staff? We've made a, there was a motion that passed for the August 8th and pickleball, is that a still standalone, or a standalone meeting with one item for pickleball?
Well, there'll be, there'll be a report on that night about pickleball, right? But are we still open to have other agenda items? I think so.
I'm open.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Your discretion as to what, how much we can handle.
Okay.
And, at the, at the end of the August 8th meeting, because we have another meeting before the list, the list of pending agenda items, at that meeting, as usual, we can discuss the next meeting, correct? As usual. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all for a productive meeting this evening, and it's before 10 o'clock, so.
It's a mere...
Concise.
First time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and we're adjourned.